All right, I would then like to welcome everybody to the April 6th Board of Selectmen meeting. It's 6:01. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, present.
Quinn Miller, present.
Veronica Calp, present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands unashamed, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Chairments additions or deletions at this point I have none.
Madam Chair. This isn't something that normally would involve the select board, but I just, out of an abundance of caution, given the new policy, we do have Jess Fellows on the call. And she's looking to see if she can use the meeting hall between the Library and Senior Center as a part of a blood drive, have a blood mobile coming, and they would be just using the hall, people's 15-minute period of time that they sit and have a snack and make certain they're okay before they leave. Normally, in the course of business, that would be something that would just have been granted. It's usually coordinated through the library. But I did want to just, while she's on the call, see if we can just add that on there and get your nod of approval if it's something you feel inclined to do.
Then should we add that as 2.0 since she's on the call right now? We'll do it before the T-CAM appointment?
That'd be perfect.
All right, so let's do that. Do I need a vote to do that, or can we just add that in?
Chair's discretion.
All right, so we'll add in Jess Fellows. Blood drive as 2.0. Any other additions or deletions, Wayne or Joe?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, public comment, or is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment?
I do. Actually, I've got two public comments.
Okay, is there anyone else that has a public comment? All right, Karen, it looks like it's just you, so go ahead. Comment one.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the town employees for being overly generous and helping me out in this time of confusion. Everyone, I know they're busy, but they've all gone out of their way to help me, and I appreciate it greatly because there's a lot of stuff in the office that I have no idea what I'm doing with it. So again, all, I know you're all busy, and I really do appreciate it. So now having been said, I watched the selectmen's meeting from last week, was it? And I was kind of taken aback a bit when Veronica, you mentioned that you weren't aware that we did not have a 35-foot.
Oh, did I say that? I must have said that wrong because I'm certainly aware of the 35-foot reg.
That we don't have a 35-foot No Disturb, correct?
Oh, no, we do. Well, I don't know if we do. I think we need, we are getting an opinion from council on that. That was what we had the discussion.
My point is, if we did have one, then why in 2017 did you put a warrant article on Town Meeting to change Townsend's wetland bylaw to add a 35-foot No Disturb, which was
I believe you were mistaken on that. The bylaw that was added was to define the reason for a waiver. No one changed the regulations at all. So if you go back and look at that warrant, I'm sure you'll see that the bylaw that was suggested in 2017 was to add a process for a waiver.
Yeah, I don't
So that was what it was meant to do.
Madam Chair.
So any, yes, Joe?
Just, Karen, I'm just gonna step in here, because seeing you brought it up, I'm just gonna reiterate on that thing. As far as that 35-foot rule, I have been building homes in Townsend for about 10 years, 12 years, and I can give you as many plans on the wetland, everything. Absolutely, we had to stay 35 feet, no disturb, no build, no nothing. And that was just, that was the rule, that was conservation's policy. And you can just go right down to Madison Ave and just look at that project right down there that the town has on their website. We had to abide by that 35 feet on most of that project. So I disagree that no 35.
Our bylaws states that a 35-foot vegetated buffer strip, we'd like to see. It doesn't call it a No Disturb. So it's not, and we have been trying to maintain a 35-foot vegetated strip, but it's not a No Disturb.
Okay, I would just say at this point, thank you for your comment. Karen, we are getting a, an opinion from council, and there will be a discussion when that is obtained. Thank you. All right, moving on. 1.5, review and approve meeting minutes for 12:15, 20:00, 2:00, 21, and 2:08, 21. And at this point, I think I would like to move these to next week unless there is an objection to that. Where either of you, I did not review these, which is why I want to do that, so.
I did, but now, Madam Chair, I don't know if we're gonna have the meeting next week. I will not be anywhere accessible to be. I can do the week after, the week after that. But the 30th, I will not be near Wi-Fi. I will not be able to join that meeting. Just, it heads up now.
So maybe we'll need to talk later on in the, so we won't move it to that. Wayne, were you able to review those minutes?
I did, and I didn't have any issues with them, so.
I did.
You, you did it as well?
Yes.
Okay, then let's go ahead. Is there a motion to approve the 2:00, 21 minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the 2:00, 21 minute and the 2:08, 21 minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Quinn Miller, yes.
I'm gonna, Veronica Calp's staying.
Okay.
And we'll, Joe, we'll discuss meetings later.
All right.
Towards the end of the meeting.
All right.
Okay. All right, so the 2:00, 21, and 2:08, 21 minutes have been All right, so moving on to appointments and hearings. 2.1, Jessica Fellows regarding the blood drive. Is Jessica, Jess Fellows, I don't know if it's Jessica, Jess Fellows.
Jess is there. I don't know that she was planning to speak necessarily, but she did. Either is good.
I saw, yeah.
So she had reached out to see if the meeting hall in between the Senior Center and the Library would be available for their use on, and Jess, you're gonna have to chime in actually on the date. I know it's coming up in the last week in April. They'd be looking to have the blood mobile in and do a blood drive, utilizing the interior space for people to sit down and have a snack and a drink and make certain they're okay after having given their donation. April 29th, and they'd like to have future drives as well as what she's writing in the chat. So at least, at least for the April 29th, if it, if it pleased the board.
Well, I I have a question about that. I guess my first question is, this is the meeting hall, correct? That is going to be used?
Correct.
I was, I think, isn't there a meeting hall committee? I mean, I think typically you check with Stacy and Karen. Is that correct?
Yep, she already has. And again, I feel odd speaking for Jess when she, she's sitting there and she's typing. Library and seniors, and I have already approved, she writes. So she already did go through them, but out of an abundance of caution, they recommended she speak to me. And out of a double abundance of caution, I'm speaking to you.
Okay, so I guess my questions are, what, I know that the Senior Center, they reopened this month, and Karen had certain requirements for people. So when people come in, will they answer, follow the same protocol as those who have to go to, who go to the Senior Center? In other words, the temperature check, the questions, et cetera, et cetera? I'm looking for a chat answer.
She's still there.
I'm just wondering if Karen or Stacy, they, they said it would be okay. Did they put any COVID-related things on it?
We'll be following protocols and happy to follow their requests.
I just have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Joe.
Just, I know we've been discussing, the Senior Center has a ventilation problem, I do believe. As long as we make sure that the amount of people we put in there, if our maintenance guy has to put extra fans or whatever he needs to do to keep everybody safe, I just want to make sure we take care of that so we do not put ourselves in a bad position.
Absolutely.
So I don't know who that's gonna get directed to, but I need to make sure, I would think us as a board would want to make sure that we reach out, or Jimmy, you reach out to maintenance and make sure that's handled.
Yep, Jess, Jess just typed that they're not expecting a large amount of people, but I will speak to Bo in advance and make certain that the purifier in the room, the air purifiers that they've got, and appropriate ventilation.
Jess, can, can you give us some idea of what not a large amount of means? I mean, is that maybe 10 people, or do people come in, you know, do they have to distance outside and come in one or two at a time? I don't know how many people there are drawing you know, so do people wait outside? Do they come in?
Is she available to talk to us or just chat?
It, it looks like she doesn't have a phone. I don't know.
My, my experience in the past is what they do is they draw the blood in the van, and then they, they're just going to sit in the great hall for 15 minutes and get their snack, like Jim said. So it'll be one or two people at a time, max.
Do we need a? Okay, so do we need a vote on this?
No, I, I, as long as there's not opposition, I just wanted to bring it to you. I didn't want to make that decision myself, that's all. So as long as there's not opposition, we're good.
I'm good.
Yep.
Wayne, yes?
I'm fine, yep.
I'm good too, so.
Good luck.
Excellent, thank you.
All right.
You're welcome, Jess.
All right, we are two minutes from 6:15, but it looks like we have the T-CAM board all present with us. So unless there's a reason to wait the minute or two, I would think we should go ahead and get started. So this is 6:15, this is our meeting, meeting with the T-CAM board to review the ATM warrant article and motion. First, the cable build-out discussion in the high school studio. So I guess my first question is, Jim, can you bring up the ATM warrant and the motion? You had said there would be wording for the motion that's in there?
It is opening, so let's see. All right.
So I should, while you're doing that, I should say, welcome to Steve and Lisa and Dave for coming. And if you have anything else that you want to add to this, you know, feel free.
There'll be a few items, Madam Chair.
Okay, Dave.
Can everybody see that document?
Yeah, can you make it a little bit bigger? I wish we had a, you know, a button that we could do that each of us ourselves. So, okay.
So Madam Chair, this is the article that was submitted by T-CAM's council. I will admit to having made one minor edit, which she had submitted it saying Town Manager, and I changed manager to administrator. Other than that, this is exactly what she submitted, and she and I have spoken on the contents of the article and the description. The one question that you had, Veronica, that we spoke about is whether or not there would be a dollar figure, because there usually is a dollar figure in a warrant article seeking an appropriation. The way that she and I spoke about it, T-CAM's attorney and I spoke about it, would be that the amount that is in the PEG access receipts reserve account as of that day is the amount we put into the motion. So there would be, where this is to see if the town will vote, the motion, when we do the motions up, will read, "I move that the town vote." And where it's to appropriate, there will be a dollar figure inserted, and then you take the last phrase and take any other action or relation there too off. And that would be the motion.
So to see if the town will vote to appropriate $190,000 from the PEG access or whatever, I'm just making up a number. So it will go in after to appropriate.
Correct.
All right. All right, is there any question on that from the board?
Is there any way we can find out what that number is, or will it be a surprise for us at the town meeting?
Well, I can find out tomorrow from Lori, who still is kind of moonlighting and helping us along, our former town accountant, what's in the account now. And we should receive another quarterly, likely this week, we should receive Q1's quarterly payment. So that would be added to it. We won't yet have received Q2s by the Town Town Meeting hits. And this is where you get into a bit of a catch-22. There's an informational guideline relief, IGR, done by the Department of Revenue. And I know, Veronica, you and I have talked about this. I think Lori presented it at one point in response to a question you had. There are two ways of accounting for these types of funds through a franchise agreement. One is through a receipts reserved account, which is what we're doing, and the other is to create an enterprise fund. If you have an enterprise fund, you're allowed to project the amount of revenue that you'll have during the upcoming year. If you have a receipts reserved, the more conservative model, which is the one that we're using, you're only allowed to appropriate the amount that you have the day of Town Meeting. Even if you really anticipate getting another quarter, until you've actually got it in hand, you're not able to appropriate it.
That's interesting. So I have a question about that then. Right now, we're doing it this way. Could we change it in the future? I'm not advocating doing anything today, but could we change it to an enterprise fund in the future?
At any time, Town Meeting could be asked to create another enterprise fund, very much like the water enterprise, where the funds are for the, the purpose of meeting the expenses of the enterprise, in this case, PEG access. And you're then allowed to, as I said, you're allowed to project revenue as opposed to being held to the exact amount you have on hand of the night of the vote.
Okay. All right. All right, any other questions about the warrant or the motion, either select board members or T-CAM board members?
I don't have any. We spoke with council last week and clear on how it needs to go going forward.
Okay. So that, that takes care of that. I'm gonna move on to the cable build-out discussion. So I guess, yeah, so the two, what, what you have there are those two letters that were at the back of the agreement between Comcast and the town?
Yes, indeed.
So.
Want me to go over the history a bit?
I don't know, T-CAM board, do you need that? I do not. I think I've got it because you and I have talked, Jim, but.
I haven't seen it.
So maybe it would be good then. Steve, do you agree?
Yeah, this is, this is the first time I'm seeing it, but I'm reading right through it. So I'm fine with reviewing it, but it's the first time I'm seeing it.
I'll give, just a brief, a brief overview. So when a Board of Selectmen, many moons ago, back in 13 and 14, were negotiating the new franchise agreement with Comcast, which is a 10-year term. It was finalized in the summer of 15. They were negotiating that with the assistance of council and the then members of the Cable Advisory Committee. So John DiAngelo, Stan Dillis, Kathy Spofford, and some others. They negotiated the terms of the agreement proper, which you should have each, members of the, the board, you should have each seen copies of. And inside of that main franchise agreement, there are provisions where they agreed to provide money to the town for capital purposes to create a studio. There's, there's language that says you're gonna get $75,000 for this, you're gonna get 30 for that. I mean, there, that's the stuff that you negotiate into a franchise agreement. What you, what you generally don't see when you negotiate a franchise agreement is something like this letter, which is why it was a side letter, wasn't included in the actual franchise agreement. The franchise agreement has specifications in it that detail when they have an obligation to extend the cable system. Has to be certain number of residences per aerial mile to justify them having capital expense. The members of the Board of Selectmen and the Cable Advisory Committee at the time that were negotiating this were very keen on getting this area of town, so Sauna Road, Bayberry Hill, a piece of old turnpike, served with cable, because they didn't have cable at the time. So what they did, the file shows, I wasn't a party to it, so I'm just going by what I've been told and what I can read, is they negotiated this side deal that says in two separate side letters that the parties are agreeing that the area, certain roads, which include the following residential passing, and it lists them, that they'll provide an estimate within 24 months of Comcast costs, and within 18 months of full payment, they'll make ready the polls for certain roads, and Comcast will extend the system to certain said roads. The next letter, they did the same day, that was also a side letter to the agreement, reads, "On the PEG access transition date of December 15th, Comcast agrees to pay the town $130,000 in consideration for transitioning operations of PEG studio from Comcast to the town, according to Section 6.2 of the Townsend Cable Renewal License dated November 10, 2015." So the way this is presented by those that did the negotiations and is clear in this file is this was the funding piece to do the work of extending the cable down to that area of town. It took far longer, and I know Wayne is, one of the first things Wayne brought up when he got on the board three years ago was this issue, wanting to get it accomplished. I'm sure he's happy, but those down there are happier that they actually do have access to cable service now. So the project is done. It didn't come in at 130, it came in at 94 and change when all was said and done. And they're looking to be paid. So that brings the next question. If you go to the Town Meeting warrant article that was put forward last July at the annual Town Meeting, there was an article to appropriate funds, or to authorize the selectmen to transfer funds from the PEG access receipts reserved fund to T-CAM in the amount of, I think the net was 425, 425,000 or something in that order. The note that was listed in the warrant article under description, which is where we describe what that's about, it mentioned the fact that this was to fund the newly created nonprofit, T-CAM, and that a portion of the funds are earmarked for the system expansion down on Sauna Road, Bayberry, in that neighborhood. So now the question, as I understand it, is why would T-CAM be responsible to pay this bill from the money that they had transferred to them? And I guess that's where we are right now.
So I guess my question is, the 130,000, which was in 2017 on Article 25 to transfer?
2016.
16, excuse me, 16, the 130,000 to transfer the funds for this project? So where is the breakdown of the 130,000? Because that's not in the T-CAM account.
I have from Lori, and I just received a printout late this afternoon of, of the, anything related to cable access. So amounts that the town had on hand during the transition and everything that has gone in and gone out, include the 130, and then a separate breakdown of the 130 and what it was spent on during the course of the first two years after.
Could you put that on the screen? Because we have, we've never been able to have access to it. We'd like to see it.
I have a hard copy of it. I just was handed it tonight off the system. It's not an Excel spreadsheet. It's actually printed from the AR system, and I don't have access, contrary to what people might think. I don't have access to the potential software, so I can't pull it up on the screen for you.
I have another question then. I, I guess I'm, I'm at a loss as to why this wasn't put forth prior to this afternoon. There was no way to information prior to tonight?
Which information specifically, Lisa?
The 130,000 breakdown.
Well, I had asked Lori for the ins and outs of all, all cable-related funds, and she did provide that last week. And then I was specifically asked, I believe on Friday, to have the 130,000 broken out. And as I said earlier, Lori's no longer working with us. We don't have a town accountant. So she is still moonlighting and helping us out. So she gave Lee, our 10-hour assistant accountant, direction on how to find that and print that report. And it was handed to me this afternoon at around 3:30. So I do have that, and I can make that available to everybody, but I did just get it.
Well, I guess I'll go back. If the 130,000 was earmarked for this expansion project in these areas, why would we ever spend down on this account, knowing that we had this bill and we had to pay, and we had to pay this out? So now it is, you know, 2021, this project has long been done. There's still money, from what I understand, sitting in this account. You know, the monies has been already transferred over to T-CAM, which did not move this 130. But I don't understand what, you know, this, from what I understand, from my attorney, there's, you know, in the T-CAM board, I shouldn't say mine, T-CAM board's attorney, there's specific things that this 130 could have been spent for. I'm just not understanding, why would we spend that money knowing we had this bill, knowing we had this project?
Well, my understanding, Stephen, when you, when you see, now, have you all seen the spreadsheet that shows?
We've seen nothing.
I'm not, well, I can put the spreadsheet up because it's part of the selectmen's packet.
So I just, I just want to ask a question, so. Are we, what, we're actually, Steve, I guess I'm gonna ask you. So we're talking, is 130,000 that was supposedly transferred back in 2015 or was earmarked for T-CAM? Are you asking where that money, where did it actually land? What account did that go to? Is that what we're asking here?
Well, I know the account. I see the warrant article for the transfer, like Veronica said, in 2016, Article 25. And looking at the letters and from the understanding that this money, the 130,000, was set aside to fund this expansion project. Now, we're, you know, that money was never part of the transfer back last year when the funds came over to 400 and change, or whatever the amount, you know, that total amount was, over to T, over to T-CAM, so this money still sat within the town. But now there's a bill for 94,000, Comcast is looking to pay, and this, the 130,000 has been drawn already down on, so there's not enough to cover the 94,000 bill, which makes T-CAM now responsible for the $94,000 bill.
Well, I think, I think this is a different way of
Go ahead, Jim.
I was gonna say, I think there's a different way of framing that, Steve. T-CAM didn't exist until last year. T-CAM didn't have rights to any money until just last, so at the time of last year, when T-CAM was legal and when Town Meeting voted, everything that the town had in the receipts reserved account was transferred over to T-CAM. Now, when you look at this spreadsheet that's on the sheet, on the screen right now, this will show everything from fiscal '14, straight on down. Now, this is back when we were getting only 1% per quarter under the old franchise agreement. You'll see that it, it jumps up to roughly
Okay, wait, I want you to stop here. Scroll down to FY '16. I want, I want to follow the 130 through. And I see on the fourth line down, the 130,000. That's the 130,000. the 130 through. And I see on the fourth line down, the 130,000. That's the 130 that was in the letter, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and if you go down to FY17, so that came in in November of 15, I believe it was. So at the annual town meeting, Article 25, on May, what was it, May 3, 2016, that 130,000 went into this account, Article for Cable-Related Transitional Expenses Not Yet Fully Budgeted. So that would be the 130 for the Vinson Pond Expansion.
Correct.
That got moved into a Town Meeting Article where those funds sit. So those funds are separate from and not part of the remaining accounting because they were removed.
Right. And what I, right, but what I was starting to say when you jumped in, Veronica, is all of the cable-related funds came into the town, and they were, at one point, I was starting at the top, they were at one point living in an Access and Technology Comcast Fund. That was then changed, and things were transferred into a Peg Access Receipts Reserved Account. And then eventually, they were transferred out to TCAM at this point, back in '21. So all of the dollars came into the town and were utilized for Peg Access-related purposes.
Except that 130,000.
If you allow me to, I'm, I'm trying to explain to you. So all of that money, as it's coming in, is being used Peg Access-related purposes, including the 130,000.
Okay, so you have that article from that expense account that I gave you. Could you read to me what those expenses were on the paper that Lee gave you today?
I just have a question. What is Radio Engineering?
That's Steve Cludier's company, I believe.
It is. What, what I'm saying, Veronica, before we go down that path, if I can just finish this, anything that was a cable-related expense for the first two years that the 130 existed, well, even before, Comcast was still paying for all of the Peg Access during fiscal 14 and 15, and half of fiscal 16. So we didn't have any expenses within the budget, except if we were buying equipment or doing rewiring. So there was minimal money transferred into the town budget. Once we got into 16, you'll see that there is a $30,000 that was transferred. And when you look back at the warrant article for the budget for fiscal 17, you'll see $30,000 was used to supplement the budget for cable work, doing cameras and, and related work. And then trying to figure out where Hartley was going to live, it was agreed by Radio Engineering that because we didn't yet have a Cable Access Corporation, and Comcast wasn't paying him, and we were in the middle of a fiscal year, so we didn't have a town meeting to seek an appropriation, Radio Access Engineering picked him up. So these are payments that go to Radio Access, having taken Hartley on as an employee. So all of the funds are co-mingled, is, is probably the best word to use, although not a great word. So then we get down to fiscal 17, the May of 16 Town Meeting, and 130 is transferred out to an article for cable, no, that's right up here. 130 comes in, it goes out into an article for cable-related transitional expenses that weren't budgeted. What Terry Walsh, our prior town accountant, was doing, and what Lori followed up with doing, is the next two years, paying the expenses of cable access out of that warrant article.
Can I just, can I just interject real quick? And I, I'm following you along. I'm going to go back to my question. If the 130,000 was earmarked for the Vinson Pond and all these other addresses, you know, to fund this project, to put cable access into these areas, why are we using it, or why was it used for other purposes?
That's a good question, Steve. It's a question that predates me. You know, we don't have.
No, I know. That's what I'm asking, because now we have 94,000 sitting there.
But my point, my point that I'm trying to get to on the bottom of the sheet is, all the money came in, and it was used for cable-related purposes. And at the end of the day, there is a net amount in the town's hands, and then TCAM comes to life. And everything, with the exception of roughly, what, is it 50 grand, Veronica, that's still in that?
As of the end of February, it was 15,992 cents.
Is there any way, at the breakdown of what all this money that was, you know, annual article to fund budget, you know, every year, like 30 grand, or the 130, are there any accounting, rather than just someone plugging in these numbers on this? I mean, aren't there statements?
Absolutely. There, there are expenditure reports that would show what the expenses were. If you look at the, the budgets for those years, and I'd be happy to put that analysis together for you. If you look at, if you look at the budgets in those given years, you will have things in the MIS budget that say Peg Access Director under salaries, Peg Access Cameraman under salaries, and then there's a dollar figure, is 60 grand or 70 grand, whatever the salary was. That was paid out of the Peg Access Funds that were used to supplement the budget. If you then look in the expenses, it would say Professional Services Peg Access, it would say Equipment Peg Access. Those numbers, again, would be funded through that Peg Access money that was used to support the budget. Additionally, the employees' insurance, while not carried in that line, carried in the insurance line, is also accounted for because those were expenses that are attributable to the Peg Access programming.
I guess, from my point of view, it's just that, I mean, and, and I understand what you're saying, but it seems to me there should be more accountability, and we're trying to, to, you know, backtrack over at least the last year of mess with TCAM. And I, I mean, these are numbers, and, and us getting this tonight just seems like we should have been provided with more detail and sooner.
Yeah.
Yes, Joe.
All right. I guess, I, I've got some concerns also with these guys. Jim, I guess you just mentioned you've got whatever. What I think needs to happen here is, Jim, I think you need to get to the Board of Selectmen and also to all the members, a complete breakdown of income, expenses, and not just something on a handwritten sheet. I don't want to see that. I want to see accounts, where they went in, what they were spent, and who all this was billed, paid to, and billed to. I, I think this is the only way we're going to be able to get to the bottom of this thing and have everybody feel good about moving forward, and make sure we know where this money is.
I, I have a better idea, Joe. That would be, that would be to reach out to an audit firm, and there are a number of them that do municipal audit work. So then it's not me, because I, I truly believe that if I create a document, or if I compile records from the accountant's office and from VEDAR, the internal financial software, and put it together, and it sings beautifully, that someone still will question it. So if I start and have, you know, have the blessing of the Board of Selectmen, have somebody come in and review the entire matter from inception to the day they sign the, the report at the end, then there can be, no question, it is what.
No, I just, I think there has to be documentation to back up these figures, and we haven't been able to get our hands on them. I don't think it's a matter of you putting it together, but there should be real documentation.
Who have you asked? Because I, I haven't been asked to provide the backup for the last five years expenditures.
Jim, I, I, hold on. Jim, I sent an email asking for where it was in writing, for where TCAM is responsible, you know, for, for this bill out. And, and this is the first I'm seeing of anything. So that's number one. Number two is, and I'll believe you, you put together a software and show me, I have no, no reason to question it. What I do question, though, is there's $130,000 that was clearly earmarked for an expansion that was, somebody should have put the brakes on and said, no, we can't use any of the, any money out of the account, because that account is used for the expansion, based on the letters and, you know, conversations that have happened, that, you know, to add cable, cable to these towns, but yet, these locations, but yet, we, we bill out of this, we bill out of, we take money out of this account, and now we're dealing in April 6, 2021, and oh, by the way, there's $94,000 due. And I, I, that's where I have the problem with it, because if this money earmarked for a certain, you know, project, then that money has to be used for that project, not to be used to fund, you know, Steve Cludier's company, or whatever it is out there. That has to come through, through other avenues to do it. But yet, it, it was to offset, you know, it was to offset something. And now, again, look where we are. We're looking for 94,000, which is a lot of money, and I have a lot of money, the board has a lot of, you know, I'm speaking for the board, there's a lot of money going out right now because of six months prior of mismanagement of this, of this corporation. So, you know, I, I have to have lawyers involved. And again, when I say I, I'm meeting our board, just so everybody knows, that, and not just one lawyer, several lawyers involved, looking, looking at things because of that. So that's where I have the issue. I have no, Jim, if you put papers together, I'm not going to question that. And, and believe me, I know you're saying this predates you, but this is fiscal year 2017. We've had '18, '19, '20, and '21, and this count has still been drawn down on. And again, there's 94,000 that somebody has to pay. And that 94,000 is what? Because to get a studio together, it's over $100,000. My rent and the place to put a studio, and again, the TCAM's rent for a stu, for a studio is 87,000 a year, to get something that, that's going to be viable, payroll, insurance. So that's where I'm at.
Steve, I, I agree with your statement that somebody should have put the brakes on and said, hey, that 130 needs to be held aside for this project. I, I agree with that completely. I think some of the misunderstanding is that I have eyes on the financial software, or that special articles particularly, that's not even budgetary stuff, right? But even having said that, reverse engineer this, if that 130 had been segregated and set aside, you wouldn't have had that 425 transferred because.
No, that's not true, Jim.
That is exactly true, Veronica.
No, the 130 was brought in, and it was pulled out in that second line down in FY17. The funds that they got, I followed through this. So let me finish here.
You are correct, but not complete.
The 130 came in and got moved out.
That is correct.
And I haven't seen the, and there's an account number for that, and it should be pretty easy to get that. So I guess my question is, who at Town Hall right now is able to touch financial software to answer a question that anyone might have?
Going back to what I started with, Lori went with Lee, who was our part-time, 10-hour-a-week accountant assistant, and showed her what's a pull, and she pulled it and, and gave a copy of it just today. I have it right now. I have that account number from that town meeting with all of the ins and outs. And my point, Veronica, is you are correct in saying that it came in, and then it went out into an article, but that is not the complete story. It was, and you don't know this, so that's why it's not complete to you. That was then used to pay for, as that note on the spreadsheet says, cable-related transitional costs. So while we were only taking 30,000 for the budget in those first two years, we had expenses of closer to 150.
But you had 162,265 right there on the next line. So if the expenses were 150, why was not that 262,000 used for those expenses? I guess that's my question. I'm not going to argue this, because we're covering, it's way too long here.
This is an argument, it's education. It's not argument. When you say something like, why didn't the town, why didn't we just use the 262?
Right.
That presumes that we have access to that 262 to use. Only Town Meeting could use that 262, because it is a receipt reserved for appropriation. So each year, whatever the amount is at the end of the year, while we're building the budget for those two years, when the 130 was being drawn down for payroll and benefits and equipment, for those two years, because it hasn't been touched for '19 and '20, with the exception of, I think, three legal bills, the, the town, went to Town Meeting and said, we have a budget, and it has these expenses for Peg Access in it, and we are going to ask your approval to take 125,000 or 130, whatever it was on any given year, from Access Receipts Reserved, and then you see it in these transfers. So for that year, it was 30,000 that Town Meeting was asking. So it was 422 the year before, and then 30 of it went to the budget, 130 went out to the article, leaving a balance of 262. The next year, you start with 262. These are the revenues in. You end up with 398. Next year.
Okay, so, okay, I understand. I guess my question is, if more was needed the preceding year, why wasn't it take, why wasn't more than 30,000 taken to cover that?
Excellent question. And, and the simple answer is because everybody thought the Peg Access Corporation was going to be imminently created, and we weren't going to need to have any of this in the budget. And once the thing dragged, and they went through three different attorneys, trying to get somebody, and Wayne came in the tail end of this, trying to get somebody that could work on the creation of the Peg Access Corporation, we ended up carrying Hartley for three years.
Well, and, and you had the funds to pay for him during that time. And so I guess if the 130 was an oversight, you know, and it had to be used for other expenses, which I don't know what those expenses are, because I haven't seen that account. I mean, even this year, we took $1,225 out of there.
For a legal bill, that's what I just said. Since, for, for '19 and '20, it was, it should have been just legal bills for Bill August that came out of there. Because once, once we started going with the 100-plus-thousand-dollar revenue listed in the budget, that 130 lay dormant. But, but again, you're right, you don't have, you don't have these on that yet.
Right. So I can't answer until I.
Where does, where does the 130, it was taken out and not put back in, and restarted FY17 with the 262, and the revenue brings us that amount, you know, to 398, and then the revenue, and then they took out 125. Where's the 130?
That's, that's the point Veronica was making. The 130 went out into a special article, so now it lives in its own account. It's out there. And Terry Walsh, the prior town accountant before Lori, made the determination that she was going to pay expenses for Peg Access out of that special article. Substituting my judgment for hers, it's the judgment she made. So she was paying, and it was Hartley, it was Cludier, it became Bossum. He got here and had a role in Peg Access, and all of the equipment, when they redid any of the equipment in there. So you'll see in accounting, which I'll, you know, it's, it's, I think, five years and multiple pages each. I'll get it scanned, get it out to you guys tonight.
It just would have been nice to have some of this before, so we're not like wondering what this is, where is it, and all this. I feel like we're so unprepared, because we never got to see this.
Well, if I had a sense for what specifically you were looking for, I'd be happy.
Any accounting, I mean, any of it prior to today. Received some on Friday and, and didn't see to forward it to us, or even this afternoon. I mean, I feel like we're just going blind right now.
Okay, I think then what we need to do is the account, accounting out, and because there is a studio question that has to do with, there's a studio supposedly at the high school, yet TCAM is funding a studio, which perhaps they shouldn't be. So there, I, I think we need to figure out how this funding is going to work. And Joe.
Would have been nice to know before we signed the lease.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, we've already been almost 45 minutes. I see everyone's great concerns. I, I want to dive a just a little bit deeper than to what Jim just said, and I agree. We're at a point in this community, I think on our Town Warrant, we have, let's just not do an audit on this. Let's back the forensic audit. Let's just go through everything. Let it be put on the, and it clears everything up. This is where I think, I don't think we should pick the news. Let's get this audit for this amount. Let's just.
We don't need to pay any more money out.
Across the boards, clear everybody's minds, if there's any thoughts that there's misdoings, wrongs, you know, either Jim's doing it wrong, or we're doing it wrong. You put it right out into the open, it's right there, black and white.
I'm just trying to understand it.
That's my opinion, and I think we should kind of.
And Joe, I, I agree. You know, people think that a forensic audit is, is going to. Um, you know, people, people think that a forensic audit is, is going to shine light on, on some misdeeds or misdoings. God bless them for having to carry those thoughts around every day. I welcome somebody to come in from a forensic auditing firm. Look from, I mean, it, it wasn't coincidental in my mind that the, the petitioned article uh, looks to go back to a period in time, two weeks after I started. So again, God bless you. Let's, let's do it. Let's, it's going to be very expensive to do. Let's not be fooled. A forensic audit over a five, six-year period isn't cheap. But if it's going to make people feel that their, their employees are good custodians of their resources, amen, let's do it. So I'm with you.
So can I just go back to, we have a ninety-four thousand dollar bill sitting out there that Comcast has to pay. And again, forget the forensic audit that everybody's talking about. I understand what everybody's saying. This just purely, it's real simple in my mind. There was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars earmarked for this expansion project and it wasn't spent on this expansion project. So everybody was transferring funds and discussing that T-CAM might be imminent happening, you know, happening, not happening, whatever it is. I can't, for the life of me, I can't figure out how we knew this was, this was sitting out there. How it got, how it got forgotten. But yet, again, there's a ninety-four thousand dollar bill has to be paid. So Madam Chair, I, I have to ask, who's, you know, do I have to have, you know, Dave, our treasurer, write a ninety-four thousand dollar check?
Um, well, I don't know if I'm the right person to answer that, but my immediate answer would be no. I think we have to look at the funds that are in at least this article, and there might be one other um, that could be uh, put towards it. And then I think we need to um, talk among the selectmen about where funds are for that. And I think we also need to uh, get with the high school and figure out what the deal is with the studio before you guys go spending the hundred thousand to put the studio in. In any event, we have a bill to pay, we the town. And I think that um, we the town need to pay the bill.
Madam Chair, on the issue of the, the payment of the bill, one thing that Steve and I talked about, and I believe you and I have talked about as well, is the fact that we do have additional COVID relief funds that are coming in this second round of stimulus. And other communities have done cable expansion work through CARES Act funds because people were required to telecommute um, and remote participate from school. And that's going to continue. So I think while it's still going to be important for everybody to understand the ins and outs of these funds, it may be a moot point in terms of who's paying the bill, if COVID CARES funds are allowable, and if the board saw fit to make that as an ask. So I just wanted to put that out there. The second thing before we close, I did reach out to the superintendent of schools. I did reach out to two members of the school, high school building committee. Um, the explanation I get is that there was no expectation of a cable studio for PEG access purposes in the designs for the school. That there is a studio that has been built, but it is built for educational purposes to have um, telecommunications, television, production classes for the students. And for a number of reasons, one of which is security, about having non-school personnel on a regular basis in and out of the school property, um, from a Cory and a Sory perspective, that they never considered that it was going to be a, a cable studio for PEG access. So that, that's one thing that um, I did get clear from the members of the building committee. Wanted to make certain to share with you.
And I, and I, I thought, I was told the same, and I, and I agree. So um-
I, I guess I would want to read the contract again between Comcast and the town. And I understand that it's not a contract with the school, but I would want to look at that again because I, I read that differently.
It clearly says, it clearly says there's going to be a cable studio in the new high school, but that would be like, that would be like me defining a contract with you that my neighbor's going to put on a garage. We, we have authority to do that. So the towns have the authority to negotiate with Comcast on behalf of the school's budget.
There was a time period where the towns seemed to have more um, uh, I don't know what the right word is, I don't want to say control, over what is in the school and what community access there is to the schools. It seems like the schools have been closed off as if they are not part of the community. At least that's kind of what I'm seeing. And I know that it was not like that even, you know, fifteen years ago. Schools are a separate entity that just happens to be sitting on the property in our town. And our kids just happen to go there. But a Girl Scout troop can't use the facility. Our rec program can't use the schools that are in our towns that we have paid for. And so it's a curious situation to me. I don't quite understand. So when I, and I'm pretty sure, not positive, that in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, it was probably the case that the people that negotiated this, the selectmen, um, did think that there would be a high school, um, a studio in the high school for PEG access, for Comcast access. I'm sure they never imagined the situation that we're sitting at now. So um, uh, that's just the way it appears to be. Uh, so I um, you know, I beg to differ with those on the committee. But we do have a school system that seems to be totally removed from the town right now. It's kind of what I see. I don't know if that's true, but that's kind of what I see. Um, as far as community activities go, community use of the building, uh, community being welcomed into the building, and it's not just COVID, I don't think. So um, I, I would like to see that changed somewhat. That's all.
We'll work on it.
So uh, that's all. So as far as T-CAM goes, we need to wrap this up.
One, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, just one more question. And this would probably be better addressed to uh, the town administrator. Uh, our bookkeeper and accountant for T-CAM has contacted me to ask about some certain forms and reports, which may be included with what Jim got for a package earlier today. Uh, but just to make sure, what they're asking us to request from the town is the quarterly payroll tax returns, specifically a Form nine forty-one. Any state and federal unemployment reports and state withholding for the calendar year of two thousand twenty for whatever record-keeping purposes they need in order to reconcile payroll accounts and such like that. If that's not part of that package you already got, Jim, is there any way we can get those items?
Yeah, I actually, I reached out to um, Jared, who is our treasurer, and I, he responded back, and I thought you were CC, but let me just check something.
Okay.
Quickly, um, let's see. Well, why don't I not do this live? Dave, I mean, I see you in here a couple of times a week anyway. We could probably just get in with him directly because any, any of the reports would have come through the treasurer's office because those are benefit-related.
Right.
Reports, so he'd be the one that'd be able to put hands on them.
Okay, yeah, and we need that. I mean, it's not a uh, uh, heart attack situation right now, but our accountant's informed us, she's got certain form submission deadlines that she's got to meet that are coming up pretty quickly. So she'd need to get that stuff in a, a fair amount of time so she can do her work and prepare the forms for us to uh, get off to the state and fed. So uh, you're going to be in tomorrow morning, Jim?
I will, yes.
For the first report, the handful of reports you've got, if you'd like, I can stop by and pick those up. And then I can make copies for the board. And do you have a guesstimation when uh, we'd be able to get the other items I just mentioned?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, number one, I wouldn't know that we have them because I don't know what forms the treasurer would generally have filed. I mean, some of those forms may be specific to a nonprofit, which is going to be different than a municipality. So um, again, I think first thing in the morning, Dave, whenever you're able to pop by, we can sit with Jared and, and I can hand you off actually because he's going to know and I'm just going to sit there like alone.
Okay, no, understood then, yeah. Okay, I think that's all I had for, like I said, what the accountant wanted us to try and dig up for paperwork they need in order to file our paperwork accordingly.
Gotcha.
Okay. I don't know if Steve or Lisa had anything else to add, but that was my major uh, ask for the night.
I'm uh, I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so um, we will get um, the uh, the um, information on the payments for the past however many years and that hundred thirty thousand article. Uh, the cable build-out discussion, Jim, you'll look into um, funding for that through alternative means.
Yep.
Um, and the high school studio. Maybe there's still talk about that, we'll see. But anyway.
Madam Chair, I apologize, I do have one more item. I sound like Columbo, I apologize. Just one more question, just one more thing.
Make it quick, go.
I will, no, uh, we got an email, or I got an email earlier today from the Shanahan Sound Company of Lowell. And they were asking for input from T-CAM involving the sound proji-, the sound system project for the Great Hall. And I'm at a loss about that, but I, I can talk to Jim about it tomorrow if he's got any info on that.
Yeah, just very briefly, because you raised it, just so everybody is on the same page. Um, we sought and received approval from the state to provide audio and video capabilities in the Great Hall, such that we'd be able to hold live meetings in there with fixed-mounted cameras, very much like what's in the selectmen chambers.
Yeah.
The um, the idea is to, to get that done so we can have town meetings in there um, without being on one stationary camera. Additionally, the project would incorporate wireless access points um, up high in the rafters so people would actually have the ability to work from their um, their iPad or their notebook, wherever they wanted to work from um, during the meetings. So I know that Bo, our facilities manager, and Hartley had spent some time walking through there. I thought that Hartley had reached out to you um, to have a discussion about that, but we can get to that tomorrow as well. So it's not something that is imminent, it's likely like a July one um, type of a project, but uh, it is something we want to get scoped out sooner than later.
Right, I'm understood. I'm just, like I said, it was the first I've heard anything concrete about it. I uh, like you said, Bo's talked to me a couple of times about, hey, did you get anything yet? And it's like, no, as soon as we do, we can start looking at it. Uh, I guess predominantly the sound company just wanted input from us as far as, I guess, what kind of connections are we going to need in order to hook into the sound system to provide audio for the uh, T-CAM audience, as it were. So it's some fine technical points that I'm pretty sure neither you or I are going to be able to answer, so. Yeah, but we do need to discuss it a little bit, I guess.
Okay, and I guarantee you I can't answer it.
Well, then, we'll have a short meeting.
Thank you, T-CAM Board.
I'm doing it for real.
Um, moving on to appointments of officials and personnel then. Um, three point one, I assume we're going to move that to our next meeting?
That's my understanding because I did not see it come through.
All right, so uh, moving on to three point two, is there a motion um, to, I, I see the chief Sartell is on, is there a motion to? We are still going forward with three point two, correct, chief? Okay. Um, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Christopher Peach as a lieutenant with the Townsend Police Department, subject to a Cory check, medical exam, I have taken out the pre-employment physical and a one-year probationary period with a start date April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I don't know if anyone has an rejection to that, but I, and I'll give you my reason. Since I've been on every appointment we've done, it's been medical exam. I've been told pre-employment physical is the same, but I just think for, straight across the board, keep the wording the same, medical exam, and that's what I put in, if it's okay with the board.
I, I was asked a question about that as well. Why, what is the difference between a pre-employment?
A whole second before you discuss.
Okay. All right, thank you, Wayne. But anyway, um, so discussion. Uh, someone asked me that, that exact same question. And uh, I talked to Jim and it's basically the same thing. I mean, there's, whether it's, but it is true that what we've been doing is medical exam.
Yeah.
And just to be clear for folks following at home, Madam Chair, um, pre-employment physical is actually a more pointed and direct thing for what we're doing. Um, you know, when I spoke with counsel about it after you guys raised the question, just to check myself, because I've always used pre-employment physical whenever I've done an agenda. They confirm and they concur that pre-employment physical is a, a more appropriate, even though they're the same, they're synonymous. Pre-employment is a very specific thing. Hi, I'm applying for this job, the job description, I need to be examined to determine whether or not I can do this job. Very much like the issue that where we've been discussing earlier this week with another appointment. So while they are synonymous and it's your prerogative to pick medical exam, you know, go for it. Um, I just want to make the, the point clear that I'm the one that made that change because for the first time in a long while, I actually did the agenda this past week. And that's just, I'm typing out of rote memory. So that's why it says pre-employment physical.
Chief? Anyway, yeah, any discussion, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just got a question, but Chief, Chief, that won't do anything for you? There's no problem with me changing that wording for what you need to do and accomplish?
No, not at all. One thing that might be driving it is, and this may go a ways back, is uh, the pre-employment process for like a, a brand-new officer who does not have any sort of MPTC training is very specific as to what he has to, or she has to complete prior to. That also may be muddying the waters a little bit. I think the generic way that it's phrased here is perfect for us.
Okay. Any, any further discussion?
No.
All right, um, all in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So congratulations to our new lieutenant.
Thank you very much. I've, I've spoke with Miller about this before and, and as well as Mr. Cradler. We'd like to bring him, him in for a personal introduction when uh, when we're not dealing with the COVID rules or when we actually start to have in-person meetings. I've got a little pent-up, a couple of things I'd like to bring from personnel uh, before the board, all positive, of course, uh, once it gets a little bit more personal. So just something to keep in the back of your mind. I think you will have an opportunity to, to talk with Chris and yourself.
All right, thank you very much. We look forward to that.
Just one question, Chief. Just one further question to, for the Chief, sorry, Veronica.
No, go ahead.
Does this fill up, fill up the police department completely?
So yeah, I think we will be at full complement with this, with this appointment uh, at, at the time being.
Excellent.
No, knock on wood, but we are, we are at full complement as of uh, the nineteenth of April. Nineteenth of April is a holiday, it actually will start on the twentieth, but uh, yeah, we will be at full complement, Wayne, for the first time. And I'm not even sure uh, how long.
That's great news.
All right. Um, thank you, Chief. Um, moving on to three point three, consider the appointment of Brian Chesnall to the uh, position of recycling attendant, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Brian Chesnall, Brian. Somebody.
Um, there, whoever is, if, someone needs to mute.
Somebody needs to mute.
We're going to echo.
It's this phone number down here, whoever it is, I will mute them.
Okay, I'll try that again, I'll start over.
Yeah, I didn't hear any of it.
Motion, we appoint Brian Chesnall to the position of recycling attendant at the Townsend Recycling Center, subject to a Cory check, medical exam, and a one-year probationary period with the start date of April seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
In a second.
Uh, any discussion? Um, I, I just noted in the uh, form that was um, part of the packet or an email um, that it's a question about the medical exam. And I um, I, I think we should do the um, pre-employment physical that's required through the town.
Oh.
Did I not see that in the email that was sent?
Yeah, so-
Yeah, so I, are we discussing this is what we're doing, right?
Yeah, we, it's the motion's been made and seconded, so this is discussion.
Yeah, well, it looks like they're asking us to allow him to have use his forty-five days ago that he had a physical. I think we need to stick by what we do and and we stop making them exceptions, they just grow. So we're in favor of appointing him, but gotta go by our rules.
With the physical that is that all the employees have done? Okay, I I agree. I just wanted to clarify, Wayne, do you have any thoughts on that?
Okay.
We have to, do we have to change that motion so that we clarify not using his?
Jim?
I don't think so, no. Because he he would need approval to use his and you're not giving it.
Okay, okay, all right. So are those in favor of the appointment?
Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, the next are the appointments to the council on aging. So is there a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Thomas J. Davis O'Neman, Natalie Call, sorry if I mess with your name, Natalie Call, Annie Forsman, to the council on aging for term terms effective March nineteenth, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. So so I get the other question, so it's only like a month and a half, is that correct?
Actually, I got a follow-up email from Karen and she she said she noticed that the terms for appointments that she listed were a bit haphazard. She's she's looking to see if you can do Davis and Forsman ending twenty one and Call ending twenty-two and Oynan in twenty-three. So you could just accept that as a friendly amendment. It's wanted to make it as such.
Who was twenty-two and who was twenty-three?
Yep. Natalie Call, twenty-two, and Bernadette Oynan in twenty-three.
Well, I just do that. So, yeah, can we just accept the motion of the adjustments?
And I'll second the amended amended.
All right, all those in favor for pointing to the council on aging with the staggered terms?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, the next one is to accept a disclosure of financial interest for Jennifer Eaton, whom we had appointed to the conservation admin position a few weeks ago.
Make a motion. The special municipal exemption employee disclosure of financial interest referencing Jennifer Eaton, Conservation Commissioner and Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant.
We vote to accept, okay?
Next second.
Any discussion?
And can you look that the chair can sign it out of session? There's just a spot for signature.
And we vote that the chair signs.
Second amendment.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. And three point six, this is just an announcement, I think. This is just notice that we had appointed me as an at-large member to the open space and recreation commission and the Conservation Commission then voted that I be their representative, which is fine with me. That means that there are still three at-large positions for that committee to update that document. So are you good with that?
I'm good with it.
I don't think we need a motion for this, do we, Jim? Okay. Just notice, so I'll be the Conservation Commission rep working on that document. All right. All right, so budget review. I'm looking at our time. We're at seven fifteen. I'm just all right. So we have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee for this. So if Lynn is on, perhaps she would like to open her meeting?
Veronica, I don't think I have a quorum.
Okay. I think we can still discuss the budget.
Oh, admittedly.
Yeah. Sorry, it just won't be a joint meeting, but I I think you guys can participate as well, correct? Just as a working meeting with no decisions made by the Finance Committee, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we're good to go then, Jim. So if you want to pull up that budget?
So we have did everybody see that document in front of them?
Oh, yeah, many times.
All right, so going to this column, fiscal twenty-two. We get to the bottom and we see that we're going in the wrong direction. We're now ninety-five thousand nine hundred and fourteen out. And that has a couple of presumptions in it. One being the note right there in blue. And the note in the bottom with the red box is we are further out of balance as a result of the actual health insurance member audit. So you'll recall at the last several meetings, I'd said that the Treasurer's Office was going to do an audit of the actual number of employees we had times the plan cost. So we got that number, two new benefited positions.
Could you tell me which are the two new benefited positions?
Indeed, I can. The after the audit was done, we have Christopher Peach, the new lieutenant that wasn't in the audit and Jennifer Eaton, who wasn't in the audit. So those two.
I just have to ask, was the agent in the audit, the conservation agent that we had prior? I'm only saying that because the conservation agent is no longer a benefited position.
No, he was not. When I say an audit, I mean, as of this payroll certain last week, who's on?
Whoever was on it, okay. I got it.
So that's just so people understand from a a cost perspective, you go down to the benefits tab here. Each employee share is roughly thirty grand. So each employee that comes on and gets a family plan, the town's plan costs, the town shares roughly thirty grand. So it's not cheap. Two two additional employees has an impact. So.
Both of those employees have family plans?
Both anticipate to take family plans, yes. I mean, I I don't know until they actually sign up. But I've been advised by those that did the recruitment that the expectation is family reach.
So the ninety thousand were out, truly sixty thousand of it's just the two medicals, correct?
Yep, and that's the difference between the last budget we looked at and this one.
Okay.
So next we get to the budget proper.
So Jim, can I just ask, how do you want to do this? Because I have line numbers that I want to look at that are not necessarily yellow in color. So do you want to go through the whole thing and then have us ask our questions? Or do you want us to ask our questions as we go through?
Whatever your pleasure. I mean, you can ask them as we go through, because what I'm hoping to do is get each line answered tonight, so we have a budget. So if if that's at all possible, that would be, that would be great. So I mean, as of right now, I'm going to try to make, keep this big enough so you can see it, but so we can see all the things.
So could I just ask one more question to to Lynn? Who from the Finance Committee is on besides you?
I have Andrea and Steve.
Okay, so I guess I would also afford that if anyone from the Finance Committee has questions as we go through, just speak up. I think would be the best way to do it. Does that work for you, Jim?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that we can discuss. And I I guess I wouldn't be taking any comment from anybody who wasn't finance or Board of Selectmen. So, all right, so going forward.
So going forward, we have the webmaster parenthetical note stipend versus hourly. I mean, your your call ultimately, how you want to do that. So that's a a new proposed expense of six thousand dollars. So I just wanted to get the board's consensus on that. So if if anybody is in opposition to, the easiest way, if you're in opposition, just say so. If I don't hear anything, I'm going to take the yellow off of that and move along.
How far are we out, Jim? Eighty-five thousand, you said?
About nine ninety-four-ish.
I think this is an easy cut then, in my opinion.
I I mean, do we really need that right now? I know the website's got to be done. I know Veronica and I think Cowen has done a tremendous job on that, but maybe we can just try to save some money right now, look at it a little bit later. But, you know, I mean, let's let's let's, we got to cut some stuff here.
A little bit later. And I I don't know how many phone calls you've gotten about the website and how bad it is. I just think that we have to have someone whose job it is to keep the website up to date. I I mean, right now, you wouldn't know that we have an election coming up necessarily. You wouldn't know that we have a town meeting coming up. It has, someone has to put that stuff up.
Man, a town administrator, don't we? Be responsible for it.
I think, yeah, I think we have enough employees in Town Hall that, you know, that can be another duty assigned to make sure that gets done.
I I think it's necessary. That's just what I think. Just knowing the time that Carolyn has spent on it and the time that employees have spent on trying to update things, and we're not up to date yet. So and when is the next time that we look at this? Okay, so we we skip this. And we, when do we look at it again? Well, it's probably next town meeting. And that means we have a whole year where we have a brand-new website, but yeah, it's not up to date either. So that makes it no better than what we have right now. That's my opinion. That's all.
Well, and you got a good point there, Veronica. I mean, you've put a lot of work into it. And and by all means, I agree with you a hundred percent. That website is terrible.
We don't have a newspaper in this town.
No.
We don't have, we have, we have Facebook pages, if you follow those. We don't have another way to get accurate information to the town. And unless we have a website that's up to date, we don't have accurate information, period. I mean, you can't even look and see who, I I don't even know if the people that are on boards is up to date.
Let's go to a pin in it and see what else we can cut.
I'll go with that, okay.
Veronica?
Yep.
This is Lynn.
Yeah.
I was thinking, it's just a thought, but you could put it out there as a volunteer position, which maybe like the other I know, like, some people put in volunteer time and they get money off their taxes. So.
That's a senior write-off, so it would have to be a senior citizen, correct? Correct, wrong.
But let's, let's, let's pin it and see. I I mean, by all means, I I really truly feel we need state-of-the-art website. We need people to be able to get on to the website and and see we got an election, see we got this going. Right now, it's four, it's disgusting. It's six thousand dollars.
Yes, but this would, this would it, this, Joe, this would just be an interim until you can find a webmaster. Because so far, you haven't found one.
Well, advertised. We have an advertised.
You know, not to give Mr. Cradler any more work, but can't we just tell him his make it, get, take care of it until we figure it out? Sorry, Jim.
Don't it. You know, right now, the policy has been that departments do their own pages, but as Veronica said, you know, there are, there are depart, there are webpages that don't have departments associated with them necessarily. So you know, you get stuff that gets pretty stale pretty quick.
Okay. Let's move on. We we missed the yellow highlighted salary of yours, Jim.
Yep. Of all the salaries in the in the budget that's presented, mine is the only one that is status quo. And there is a a discussion to be had pursuant to my contract that is scheduled, so we'll have that discussion.
Well, I guess my my thing is, right now, I think we need to decide, are we increasing personal services contracts?
I don't think, I don't think you have a choice, Madam Chair, because the town has contracts with personal service employees that has language that provides that they get increases. So it's not really a choice of yours.
Okay, so let me ask a question. I thought that the language was such that, and I don't have the contract in front of me, that only if all other employees, meaning the other personal services.
No.
That's not true?
Mine, it's clearly not true. And but again, I'd prefer to have the discussion as is allowed in executive session. If you want to have it live, I I can do that, too. I'm prepared to have that conversation now if you'd like to do it live on TV. But the other two contracts, in particular the chief's contracts that we've had a prior discussion about, it says any non-union department head gets a raise, they get at least that. So we have non-union department head. An example would be Stacy. Joe and I went over this just today. So looking at the Collins grid, you'll see Stacy's position. She is a non-union department head, and in this budget, she is slated to see a three point seven eight percent increase.
Is she the only non-union department head?
I believe so, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I'm going to express my opinion here, and I may get myself in trouble. I've always said it, I get myself in enough trouble by myself. I don't usually need help, but prior to me coming on, I think all those contracts, the fire contracts, the police contract, they were negotiated, and they were negotiated fairly recently. You know, at this point, I think it's really important that the employees that have not been getting any raises whatsoever is what I felt we were targeting here. If I felt for me arguing to try to do the right thing for a lot of the employees that have not had raises, all these contracts that are out there, okay, and I've expressed it, I I don't I don't like them. I would never support a contract that is out there the way they are written, nor will I ever do that. But if I knew that this was going to create a real problem, I I probably wouldn't have been this was all about getting the employees that have nothing in three years, something. And now I think it's turning around and biting me in the butt because I've been so adamant that now the people, no disrespect to any of yous, that have been getting raises, that negotiate contracts every year or three years. I I I'm not in favor of it. I just, I'm not.
Selectman Shank, Madam Chair, that becomes a a leadership issue for the employees that are sitting on the other side of those contracts. Example, my contract in a number of years that I've been here would have provided me raises in dollar amounts that were significant. And because I was your agent at the bargaining table, not you, but Boards of Selectmen prior, and I was taking the position that there wasn't the ability to do raises that year, I chose not to exercise the language under my contract, and I left money on the table. I had a legal right to take that. It was a contract with the town, but I didn't. Now that people are getting raises, I'm not thinking the same way. I'm going to have a discussion with you about the fact that I have played by I'm going to have a discussion with you about the fact that I have played by the rules and taken a leadership position and not taken raises. But now that everyone's getting raises, I want to have my discussion with you. So that's what the discussion will be from my perspective later. When you're dealing with contracts, and I, I just want to share this with you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop that share, and then I'm gonna go on to this share here. You, can everybody see this document right here moving? Yeah?
Yeah.
So annual salary increases. In each succeeding year of the contract, the chief shall receive, so I'm not saying who this is, a couple chiefs, the chief shall receive the same salary as stated above, plus any annual increase approved by the town for department heads slash non-collective bargaining unit employees, if the town administrator, in his sole discretion, determines performance is proficient, documented, just in the agreement. So, this language does not afford you the ability legally, morally, to say you're not going to give this employee a raise pursuant to the terms of the legal document between the town and the employee. And the employee could say, thanks but no thanks, I'm not going to take a raise. I wouldn't advocate that that employee do that this year, because everybody's getting raises.
Well, only if the contract is accepted. Every employee has gotten a raise on paper for the past three years, but they have not actually received that money.
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct. So I just wanted to make the point that, you know, you cannot like the contract, and that's fair, but.
I want, I, I want to make it very clear, okay, that, no disrespect to you, but those contracts are written for some of these employees, okay? They're ludicrous. The town of Townsings can't afford those contracts. You know what I mean? I have been in this community for 50 years. I have never seen contracts with buyouts of $150,000 or whatever. That's just to me is alarming and dissatisfying that we have employees, that we have to take care of our employees, don't get me wrong, okay? But my employees, and I've been for 50 years, I've had employees, they come to work, they do their job, you take care of them, you respect them, but they're not, when they're ready to leave, expecting this massive handout. I, I mean, I, I, I'm just. No disrespect to anybody, gentlemen, ladies, but I have the right to my opinion, and I'm expressing it.
Absolutely, Joe, and, and when these contracts come up to be reconsidered, if you're seated, that opinion is going to drive the discussion at the table. The only point I'm making is when you got elected, you inherit the rules that exist at the time you're elected. And these rules, you don't have to like it, but it is what it is.
So I, I just want to say, when it says succeeding year, if the contracts haven't been enforced for a year yet, is there an obligation to give an increase? In other words, at least for one of those, I would think that the increase would not be at this town meeting, but the following town.
The succeeding year is this conceding fiscal year. I mean, the, the budgets run, the salaries run on a fiscal year basis.
That hasn't always been the case, has it?
With the exception of one that you guys did recently, yeah, it has always been the case.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question to the Chair of the Finance Committee, just through?
Uh, yes, Steve, go ahead.
Lynn, you remember at our meetings last year, and I had brought up the contracts in the town and, and, you know, not to, you know, that we had a FinCom meeting, and there was a buyout of a contract, Joe, to your point. And at the time, you know, the town couldn't, you know, it, it was going to be tough to afford it in, in one lump sum. And I had made the suggestion that could we, and Jimmy were there, obviously, we had talked about this, could we split this up to make it more palatable for the town at the time? But I did, Lynn, if you remember, I brought up, and, and I guess this is to the board, that, you know, when these contracts are made, and I'm not going to talk about individuals or anything, contracts in general are made. You know, at what point can the Finance Committee, or not all the Finance Committee, but a member of the Finance Committee, be involved in that contract negotiation, or just somebody that's going to be sitting in the room as the Finance Committee, as I always believed it to be, as the watchdog for the, for the town, for the people of the town, to say, hey, wait a minute, you're entering a contract that if such-and-such leaves or is fired or whatever may happen, and again, this doesn't go to a person, this goes to, you know, the contract, contracts itself, how is this going to pay for? Because it, it seemed to me in the past that no one really thought about that. And so we get into a situation where we have somebody leave, you know, and now we have to pay all this money out. And or if a next person decides to leave or something happens, and all this money is, has to be paid out. So, and I, and Lynn, didn't, what, didn't somebody bring this up at a selectmen meeting from, and I wasn't there from FinCom, and that was my question to you?
I think we brought it up with Jim, and Jim advised us, or correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, that, um, that you had never seen a finance person at a contract meeting.
Yeah, I, I said that, and I followed up pretty quickly, Lynn, with, ultimately, it's the Select Board's responsibility and authority under the law. And they can have whomever they want in the room. They can have counsel with them, they can have, if they wanted a member of the Finance Committee, if they wanted to delegate it to, to somebody, they could do that too. But ultimately, the decision is, is, begins and ends with the Select Board, because they are the contracting authority for the town.
I, can I, can I speak again for a minute? I, I think, and somebody can correct me here at any point, okay? But some of these contracts that are out there were not even approved by town councils. And, you know, we're just in, the town of Townsings in a very dire straits right now. We have great, great, great employees that have been here a long time, residents of the community, that have dedicated themselves to the community, to the town, okay? And they've been struggling, we've been struggling to get raises. I am really, I, I'm more, right now, I'm more dis. Self, that if I knew that me being so adamant to take care of the little guy that's been here, and no disrespect again, please, and, and anyone can come and call me and talk to me at any time they want, and I'll be happy to one-on-one give them my opinion. But when you have three or four people in the community making that kind of money, it's very tough. I would have never, never, I would have tried a different way to try to take care of the employees. And, and I, 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 I don't know, I think, I think we gotta, I think we gotta really look at that hard and really long. And I think all the contracts out there, the people that are under service contracts or whatever we gotta call them, you know, every two years, every three years, you have the pleasure, the ultimate pleasure of negotiating your contracts. The town employees don't get that pleasure. We just tell them, you ain't getting a raise, too bad, move on. And, and, and it just, it's a bad thing. It's a bad thing.
It's, that's actually not accurate, Joe. And I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, when you start a comment with no disrespect intended, my antenna goes up, because what you said is disrespectful to me. Because just because I don't live here, and I haven't worked here for 30 years, doesn't mean that I have lesser right to provide for my family. And while I make a very good rate of pay, that's commensurate with the job that I have. So when I hear things like the three that are making the money as though, you know, we're sneaking it under the cover of darkness and raiding.
Say that, say that. So don't put those words in my mouth.
What I said is, that's what I heard, Joe.
But I am stating a fact. And, and, and the police chief's a great person, he does a great job. The fire chief, same with you, do your job. But it's a fact, this is a small community, we're not a big city. We can't afford where we go. Would, would you say, because us looking at this budget, we're already in the deficit, okay? Because now we're trying to take care of employees, so how do we go forward? How do we, how do we fund all this? You know, they come in, they do their job, there's been remarks made out there, I'll speak candid. You know, people are here, they want to get their, you know, their time in. I think, Wayne, you may have heard it too, you know, they're here, we're going to do our time, we're going to move on. And, and that's okay, that's part of a job. I'm not being disrespectful to anyone, I'm stating a fact. And the fact is how I feel, and as a Board of Selectmen, I'm going to be vocal. I'm going to put my two cents in, because for the past five years, the Board of Selectmen has sat there and been nothing but puppets and allowed this charade to go on.
Do you want to tell us what you really think, Joe?
No, I don't, I just.
Madam, Madam Chair, if, if we're having this discussion later in executives, I suggest we do that.
He's speaking for the people.
And I agree with Joe, but let's.
Yeah, I.
We, we, we got to cut. I mean, we got to find places to cut, so.
That's my next thing to look at then, it's line 13, I think it is.
Okay, Veronica?
Yep.
I just want to say, Steve's question in the beginning, it sounds like we need to come to the board to see if you would ask us to join.
And, um, yes, and I, I absolutely think you should do that, Lynn.
Is that Steve?
No, I'm not saying that has to be, I'm just saying for me, it's just a member of, of FinCom. Lynn, you're the chair, and by all means, that could be you, or if you wanted to delegate it out to a, a member of FinCom, that's completely your call, you're the chair. And I, I just remember a discussion we had, I, I think it's, what do you think, was it about a year and a half ago, Lynn, or a year ago now? I, I can't remember. And because we talked, right, we talked about these contracts in length, and we talked about that, you know, most companies, you have employees that will. And when that, when that person leaves, that's it, they leave, or if they're terminated, that's it, they're gone. But when you have a situation, and Joe brought this up, when you have a situation where, well, it's time to leave, but there has to be a payout, that's when it becomes very iffy on, you know, the, the budget, as we're sitting here trying to find 94,000 or whatnot, because there is one more payout that has to happen this year, and if that payout wasn't there, this budget looks a lot different. You know, so that's what I, that's what I'm just saying, you know, so Lynn, how, however, you, you, whoever you feel should be that person, and if the Board of Selectmen, you know, agree to that, I, I'm 100%.
Steve, we can discuss that Thursday, okay?
Okay, yep.
Well, I think that when there is a contract to be negotiated, it would be good to have a, you know, come forward and talk to the Board of Selectmen, and we'll do a vote at that time. I guess the question comes then to what about union contracts? Does the same thing hold? I, I don't know. And, and does the same request hold, or is it just for a personal services contract that you're looking at? So maybe if you guys talk in your meeting on Thursday, and then let us know what you think, that would be good.
Madam Chair, just one last brief comment before we go to line 13. The, the contracts that, that people have consternation with, I can appreciate that. You know, the only time that, that my, my interests are not aligned as acting as a town agent is when I'm sitting at the table opposite the Select, negotiating my contract for my family. So having said that, the, the thought that these contracts are costing all of this money. The one that you're referencing, Steve, costs money because the Select Board at the time chose to offer money to an employee under a contract, to do something that wasn't allowed under the contract except by agreement.
But Jim, but Jim, hold on, Jim, on that one, if that contract was just allowed to run out, which it didn't, because that was a mistake, this, this was a non-issue.
I agree.
So that, that was, that was, that was, that was a tragic era, and that's why we're paying that out.
I agree. My point, though, Steve, is that that's not the contract's fault. Because the contract didn't do that. A decision was made, an ask was made, and agreement was struck. And that wasn't part of the contract, that was, that was a decision that was done, so, you know.
I agree, Jim. No, I, believe me, I know it's the contract, I know, I know the fault, I know exactly what you're saying. I'm just telling you, from, from a management standpoint, not you, not chief, not anybody, but for the people negotiating that contract, nobody had their eye on the ball. And I said this before, God bless the people that negotiate their own contract, because if they were behind, if they were sitting across the table from me, no way, no chance, not going to happen, because nobody gets those payouts. Maybe if you're sitting in there in the city of Boston, maybe if you're, you know, but not in a town where there's 8,900 people, and we're sitting here trying to scrape pennies together to balance a budget. That is absolutely just ridiculous. And you know what? Shame on the people that did it, because this is why we're in this situation now.
That's exactly my point I was making. Shame on that fire board. Absolutely, they did this community no justice.
I think, I think what you may find is that in municipal positions, like town manager, town administrator, police chief, fire chief, this is a pretty common setup, and you may disagree with it, and you have the ability as members of the Board of Selectmen, and perhaps even now a Finance Committee member, to be involved. Next time it's up, give it your best go to change it, and if people can't come to terms, they shake hands and they part, you know, and they go separate ways. But it's not an anomaly to have this stuff, and it's because you subject yourself to, unlike something in your business or where you are, Steve, you as a police chief in a small town, subject yourself to politics. And politics can bite you and ruin your career. You can do your job correctly by the law, and if a majority of people don't like it, you can be ruined. So that's why there are these layers of protection built into contracts, municipal government.
And, and I'm not even down that road. I don't even want it, I, I don't even want it.
I know.
People's life ruined. So let's just leave that alone. Just don't even get me on a tangent about that.
I'd love to have that conversation.
Can we get back on the budget, please?
Get back to the budget, because I have some line numbers that I would like to go over. So the first one is, because I'm looking for nickels and dimes to get that money back. So number 13, if we're not going to take it out of salaries, then we got to take it out of somewhere else. So number 13, VOS professional services, $5,000, a year-to-date expenditure, nothing. I want to make that $2,000 for a $3,000 savings, right there. I'm, I'm getting us that web.
Do we even need that much money? I mean, if we haven't used it, what do we need it for?
Well, I don't know what it's here for, and so consequently, I'm putting it down to 2,000.
Put it to 1,000.
Um, well, what is it used for? What has that ever been used for? I don't know. So I don't want to be, we might go down to 1,000, might go down to zero, but right now, I would make that 2,000. If someone from FinCom knows what this has been used for in the past, feel free to speak up. But I think, I think we can move that down to 2,000.
Jim, do you know what that's been used for?
I've not seen it used for much of anything. I know that it was initially created a number of years ago to have a minutes clerk. And funding was taken of that line for that. I know that in, several years ago, there was an outside consultant that was used for a matter before the Select Board, and those funds, professional service funds, were used for that. But Veronica's correct, we haven't touched it this year at all.
I would just wipe it out, just eliminate it, zero it out. I mean, why have it there? Why have, if we need money, $5,000 that hasn't been used in years, why carry it? Wayne, do you agree?
Yeah, just cut it, I mean.
All right, make that zero, there, there's a $5,000 saving.
Exactly.
Okay, so now go to line 19.
Can we just pick that a little, little bit bigger, Jim? Our old eyes are not so good. There you go. Good, thank you.
Okay, so I would, that one was 2,500. I would cut that back to 2,500.
This one?
Yep, right there. And that guts, gives us a $4,500 savings.
Which one was that? I'm sorry.
Education and training.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, us, the Board of Selectmen? Do we need training?
Can't be trained, Joe.
We're beyond training, so let's save that money.
So I would make that 2,500, that's a $4,500 savings.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so my next one, scroll it down, I'm at like 41. Oh, so is there anything we need to look at? There's a yellow.
Just highlighting the fact that we've got the town accountant salary pegged in mid-grade, and I have it highlighted because I. and I have it highlighted because I have no idea whether that's going to be sufficient or not. We've, uh, we've been back out in the marketplace now, well over a month, we had one applicant who as soon as she let it be, who was in the marketplace, her prior employer in another town scooped her up. So we have nobody currently in the line for this position, so I don't know whether that'll be sufficient. But it can be addressed.
That's the offer right there, so that's, you know, kinda mid, it's fine.
I'm gonna take the yellow off that then?
I think so, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
All right, so then I'm down at line thirty-one, professional and technical services. Again, this is another not expended year-to-date. It was seventy-five hundred in FY nineteen, or seven hundred fifty, I would make it seven hundred fifty. Actually, I would make it five hundred and save a thousand.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Because I don't even know what it's used for. So that's, that's that. And then, keep on going, I wanna look at the facilities budget. Because that is one left.
Excuse me, back on the accountants.
Yes.
Thing, is it wise to cut something you don't know what it's used for? The accountant would know what it was used for.
But if they haven't used.
It hasn't used this year, Andrea.
Yeah, well, but this is a COVID year, and this year is extremely different than usual. Maybe every so many years, she has to buy one thing or another, I don't think it's wise for you to cut something to the bone until you find out what it's used for.
Well, Andrea, it was at seven fifty, it went to fifteen hundred, never spent a penny of it, so we're not cutting it to the bone, we're just.
Never cut it, all right. If you, if you think, I don't, I, I think we've had more and more professional accountants as we've gone along, and I don't think it's wise to cut it until you know, that's all. Go ahead and do, if you want, that's fine, but I don't think it's wise.
Well, this is Lynn, and a lot of the departments will say professional and tech services, and we always have to ask them what it is, because it's sort of like a roundup thing, and each department uses it differently. For this particular one, I would say that the tech services would be for any of their machinery that.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I.
I don't either.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to pull up an email from Lori on it, because the note said ask, because it was a specific ask that we made. There's something specific, so I'm just gonna, while you're chatting, I'm gonna try to find her email.
Well, mine just, my system hung up, but all I wanted to say was, we always go back and we ask them because it's a catch-all.
A slosh puppy, a little slosh fun.
Slosh puppy.
Slosh fun.
Yeah, but where this says tech services, it usually has to do with machinery.
Why don't we highlight that one, Jim, and mark it as possible, and find out what it is?
Yep, I have the email from her right here, so I might be able to write to it. So what she's got there for the ask? And what line are we on?
Forty-one.
Professional, technical, kind, professional, and technical. It's going to be a contractual for, I think I'm getting a message here from somebody that's watching at home, required DOR reporting changes, and COVID had put these off. So to go to Andrea's point, there are gonna be a number of budgets you're gonna see that when we built this budget last year, we were in February and March, pre-COVID, and people expected that it was going to be a regular budget year. Then shortly after that, we put the freeze in place. So a lot of the budgets you're gonna see where it might look like, well, there's a thousand dollars, it hasn't been touched, and it's because we have a spending freeze in place, and you have to basically beg and sign in blood to get access to do things, so. I'm not saying that's the case with this line, I'm just saying as we go forward, you're gonna see that.
Yeah, it would be good to know what was spent in fiscal year twenty, to know whether or not that was regular or not, you know, regular for the year. So I don't know, it was seven fifty in fiscal year nineteen.
So let's put it back to that.
I can go with that.
Seven fifty.
Raised, didn't use it, so let's just go back to where it was.
All right, so.
What's next, Veronica?
Line ninety-five. Unless you have a yellow in there, so ninety-five, this is again, professional and technical services. Right, so it was twenty-three eight, it was twenty-three eight, and then it went to twenty-eight eighty, we've spent eight thousand of it this year, year-to-date, so my recommendation would be to make that twenty-five thousand.
And I don't have it in front of me, I can pull up the budget that was submitted, which would have been about the time Anna left, but this, this is backed up by specific technical services agreements, so I'd hesitate before messing around with that one.
Okay, so I guess my question then, so yellow it?
I think we were pinning them red.
Well, pin it red then, and I wanna know why it would only, if these were specific technical services contract, we've only spent, what, eight thousand this year?
Well, it would depend on when the contracts do, for instance, if this were the audit, it's not, but hypothetically, the audit just.
It's not, the audit had a line.
That's what I said, it's not, but as an example, the bill wouldn't come due until now. So you'd pay the bill now, because the audit was just completed. I don't know what that specifically is tied to, but I can get that pretty quickly for you.
Okay, that would be good. All right, so I go down to the facility budget. And I asked you to get the information on this, so hopefully you have it.
I do indeed, so pop up FY twenty-first.
Let's go through what's here, whatever's yellow going down through here.
So you see this?
I hear a phone.
Sorry, that's mine, apologize. You see the expense report, am I sharing the wrong thing?
You're sharing the wrong thing.
Yeah, I don't.
Stop the share and redo the share, so that's gonna be this one. Let's see it now, do you see something that says segment three department, facilities maintenance right here?
Yeah, gotta make it a little bigger, Jim.
Have to make it bigger, yeah.
Well, let me actually.
And I wanted the FY twenty, is that what this is?
This one is twenty, and then I have twenty-one as well, so let me pull it over here somehow.
Be back in one second.
Okay, does everybody still see that, or did it disappear?
Yeah, it's there, but not big.
So what I wanna look at is the bottom part where it says expenses?
Yep. So do people see my cursor right here, making things different, or no?
Is it, is it blue?
Yeah.
Okay, move it over and make it bigger, hit that plus.
I don't see it moving at all.
I don't see it.
They don't either.
So I gotta get rid of that then, and go to the right line. That's the wrong one.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be showing that one, I wanna get it on the other screen, so let's do. Get out of that and screen share. This is.
You know, and.
Technology on the fly. Screen share, and I want screen two, and go. Now, do you see this one moving?
Yeah, that's better.
Better.
That's better.
So you wanna go to the bottom here, Veronica?
I wanna see what's equivalent to lines two seventy-seven through two eighty-seven.
Expenses. Yep.
And what year are we looking at?
Right up here, ending.
So this is twenty.
Fiscal twenty.
Okay.
So they finished expenses with five grand at the end of the year.
Okay, so.
And they finished their overall budget with thirty-five grand. So when you look at this note, can you guys see that at the bottom?
Nope.
Fiscal twenty ended with thirty-five thousand, of which thirty thousand was unspent salaries. So if you come up to salaries, you'll notice that there was all this unspent salary. This was the tech position that didn't get filled, we actually used a little bit of it for some, actually, the guy was here for a little bit of the year, and then he left and we never refilled it. Beau came on at a salary less than had been budgeted, and we had temporary help money that we didn't use. So of the thirty-five thousand that the facilities budget in surplus, thirty of it went to salaries that didn't get spent, and five was left over in expenses.
Okay, so I think maybe I wanna go to the budget, and I want you to look at this, because these don't line up with the words, there's like energy, there's building, there's professional services, that's what I'm looking for, and it doesn't match what you have there. You know, things, so if you could.
Let me see if I can.
Bring up the budgets.
Do you see the budget in the background here?
Yeah, so get to line two seventy-seven.
So two seventy-seven, facilities, energy, so.
Facilities, energy, so it munged all this stuff together. So what I wanted to know, Jim, if you move your fiscal twenty out of the way, okay. So right here, it says FY twenty approved, has a zero in it, what is that? I'm just really, in other words, FY twenty in this budget has nothing in it, okay?
And I'll show you why.
But that's internet, I'm gonna lose it if it's internet audio.
Okay, so just turn off their phone and mute.
All right, so if you look on the side over here, Veronica, you'll see we go from two thirty-nine, two forty, to two seventy-six.
Okay.
So if you open up these cells, unhide, you'll see that it used to be broken down, and this was a very fated attempt in a prior world to break it out by building, twelve Dudley Road, two seventy-two Main Street, two seventy-four, two seventy-six Main Street, and thirteen Elm. All of that was bundled back up the way it had been prior. So how do I go backwards here, right over here? And now, it's, it used to be two thirteen, the year that it was bundled up, it was one ninety-four, and this year it's one ninety-five, so. It's the same stuff, it's just, it was separate, it then got blown way out into each building, and now it's been rolled back together again.
Okay, so if we look at seventy-five K for facilities, energy.
Yep.
And we are, what, two-thirds of the way through the year, maybe three-quarters? We have what, three months left?
Yep.
In the fiscal year, so we're three-quarters of the way through. We haven't spent three-quarters of the funds. And so I'm looking at that, the next line, utilities, fine, but I'm looking at the seventy-five K and saying, can we make that six? Is what I'm wondering. Because we've only expended thirty-eight, so why is that? And so then the next one, that one's okay, I'm good with that. But then if you go to repair and maintenance building, and you have thirty K, and you've only spent eleven when you're three-quarters of the way through.
That's one of the examples, to go back to Andrea's point, there are a number of projects that were expected to be done in this budget that we have held off, because we didn't know under COVID how we were gonna get through the year, so.
Be more specific.
I was just about to, for instance, we have bearings that need to be replaced. Joe, remember when you came in a couple of weekends ago, and you called me and said you heard a screaming coming from the closet downstairs?
Yeah, bearing on that pump, I seen that, yeah.
Yep, so stuff like that, there's preventative maintenance that hadn't been done for a long time, so there was actual maintenance and repair work that was scheduled to get done. So he's actually been limping along, because we're in a spending freeze, he's had to replace things as they go, but he's not doing the overall replacement on things like he wants to. So for instance, we have a number of areas on this building, Memorial Hall, where the trim is not only not painted any longer, but it's beginning to get punky and rot. That'd be a line that he'd be doing that type of repair work from. So there are things that he needs to do, should be doing, isn't now, because everybody's in this holding pattern while we're dealing with what our revenue's gonna look like under COVID. So just because you see money not spent, it doesn't mean it's money not needed. It's because we're in an artificial environment right now.
So Jim, can I ask you a question? So I know Beau kinda mentioned about the problem they were having over at the senior center with the air intake, and there was roughly a twenty-something thousand dollar, no exact figure, but let's round it off at twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, that the town was going to need to do. Where was that money coming out of this budget?
It doesn't come out of this budget at all, that was a special article voted at town meeting as a part of the capital plan to do that work. So when we have, we have an operating budget, which is what we're dealing with here, and then we have outside of the budget, town meeting is asked, dear town meeting, will you vote to give us, you know, thirty thousand dollars to buy a pickup truck? Will you vote to give us twenty-five grand to do repair work on the HVAC over at the library? So those aren't operating budget expenses, those are outside in the capital budget.
So they aren't here.
What's that?
So they aren't here, they aren't in these line items that we're looking at.
No, absolutely not, no.
But so, I just wanna clarify, so I know, you know, as we do this, and I get a little more educated, so at twenty-five thousand, he would have to get it fixed, because you know, the only way they're gonna be able to keep that senior center open. So we would fix it, then we'd have to go to town meeting to appropriate, is that what you're telling me, that we need five thousand dollars out of somewhere to fix it? Is that what you just said?
I don't know what you just said you think I said, so let's try it again.
All right, so I was under you, what I'm asking is this five thousand dollars to fix the ventilation system?
Yep.
No, it's factual, it was an estimate.
Yep.
So he gets that done, we gotta fix it, because they're the only way they're gonna run it. Where is that money coming from? So are we gonna be at town meeting, there would be an item line on there saying we need to give twenty-five thousand dollars into an account to take it out of, or where is that money?
It already happened at a prior town meeting. Town meeting was asked to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for HVAC. So that happened, meeting said yes, so it is sitting in its own account for that purpose. If somebody else does that repair work, right, over there, if somebody else picks up the tab, we don't need to spend that twenty-five grand. So we can go back to town meeting and say, hey, town meeting, remember you gave us this twenty-five grand to do that? We don't need it anymore, so we'd like your permission to do something else with it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, right here, we all know it's factual, okay? The problem was broken, you had a twenty-five thousand dollar estimate, that, the generosity of a certain person is repairing that and updating that in regard to the same addition that's being done. So are we gonna have something on there to give that twenty-five thousand so we can use it? Because we're not gonna need it, because it's being done, the bill's being paid, so this twenty-five thousand dollars, we should be able to take back, am I wrong in saying that?
That would be an amount of money that would be available for another one-time project. That, that would be an amount of money that would be available for another one-time project. You wouldn't use it in this budget because this is one of the things that's.
Why, why wouldn't we?
It's one-time money.
So I'll give you an example, you've got a savings account in your personal life, got 100 bucks in it. Would you call the company and increase your cable bill by 25 bucks a month because you got that 100 bucks in savings? Because four months later, your savings is blown, but you still have that bill. So you use one-time money for a recurrent bill, not a good idea. So you don't take in this budget, you'll note, no, I'd have to reshare it. When we go back to the budget, I'll show you. There used to be, when you look at the revenue projection tab on that budget, there used to be an amount of free cash that was used as a source to help fund the operating budget. And that's a bad idea because you don't have any guarantee from year to year that you're getting that free cash. So you're building a budget with expense that recur year after year after year with. To support it. So because that 25 grand is out there, it should be used for another one-time expense. But never put it into a budget where you've got the bill next year and you don't have the 25.
But that 25,000, where is that sitting is what I'm asking? Where is that money and how would somebody get to it? So.
Right now, right now, it is sitting in the, the town's books, for lack of a better descriptor. It's called the general ledger. So the general ledger has all of these accounts, these that you see in the operating budget, and there are also accounts when you get, and if you go on the town accountant's page, you can look at year-to-date expenditure reports. This actually, what are we showing right now? I'll drag this back.
We're looking at the facilities budgets.
Can you, can you see the control thing again? This?
What'd you say?
Can you see this thing right here that's moving?
Yeah.
Okay, so when you go to, oh, this isn't going to give me one. Shit, um, this isn't a good example. In the expenditure report that you see on the town accountant's website, and I can hold the one up for fiscal 21, it should show it. Veronica, it's where you identified the peg access.
Right.
So those aren't operating budgets, those are special articles. So we have the general ledger, Joe, it has all of the operating budget and all the special articles that are voted at town meeting. In 2017, the town voted, you know, $100,000 for sidewalk. It'll, it shows in the general ledger, those funds sit in that account until they're spent for that purpose. Or if they're not spent for that purpose, town meeting is asked to do something else with them. Nobody can touch them, they sit there. But that 25 grand, when we get to the, the warrant at some point tonight, and we have a discussion about the capital plan, one of the things that's a question mark in the capital plan is the loader for $170,000. One of the questions is, could we use money that was freed up when we rewrote one of our bonds? Is $140,000. We have found out from bond council, we can't. But what we do know now is we have these other couple of articles that are out there. So we could put in the capital plan article to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds the following sums, and then you identify, this one comes from Water Enterprise, this one comes from ambulance receipts. One of them being to reauthorize the 25,000 from Article 22, whatever it was, for that town meeting. So you can reauthorize it for another purpose, but only town meeting can do that.
Okay, so can I do something right here? Can I, can we just kind of hold the 4.1 budget talk for a minute? And since we're talking about monies for other things, and I see that Brent Carney is on, can we jump down to 4.6, the Green Communities Grant submission? Because you guys saw, um, all of that. I would just like to, I, I asked him to attend in case there were any questions about, um, this. I don't know if that's.
That's just the email, I didn't actually have the submission.
Um, anyway, uh, uh, in that email, is there, is it, does it go down farther?
It does not.
Stuff that they voted on Saturday night in there?
Uh, it is not, but I could probably find that quickly.
That's okay. In any event, there were a lot of things. Joe, I think you guys saw all the possibilities, the audit that was done on all the buildings by Rise, and the, um, things that needed to be fixed, and, um, the Energy Committee is submitting a grant that MRPC is writing for them. And they could pick projects. Um, I don't know if Brent's still on or not. Um, but anyway, are you there, Brent?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I just figured we should talk about this and get you off the hook here because we could be talking for a long time, it seems.
We have.
You want to talk a little bit about where this is? Because if we are fortunate enough to get this grant, some of, um, the, the things that need, you know, that could make our buildings more energy efficient, uh, could be covered under this. So do you just want to talk for a minute?
Sure, this will be. So this would, if, if we're lucky enough to receive these grants, this will be the third time that the Energy Committee is able to, um, to get competitive grants through the Green Community Program. Um, we took input from a number of different places for, for this. We had audits done of, of all the town buildings and the schools, and were provided through Rise Energy with, um, detailed information about all the potential projects and what the energy savings would be. Um, so taking the material we got from Rise, taking the input we got from various places, uh, like the, the, you know, the schools, the planning board, um, and so forth. Um, we, we came up with this list of projects we felt would be the most competitive for this year's grant. Now, the key pieces for us were looking at the payback period, the amount of energy saved, and the return on investment. Um, those are all the key components to what the state looks at, um, when they're ranking these projects. They also do look at the amount of money that is saved, uh, you know, every year through these grants, um, by doing these projects. And I think our committee came up with, it was, it was around $23,000, um, a year that, that townsman would save if we were lucky enough to get all these, uh, projects funded. So, um, the application is due on Friday at 3:00 PM. Um, MRPC is putting it together for us. Um, Jim would need to sign on behalf of the town. Um, and the state has the, has the ability to either approve all of these, they have the ability to, um, to do just some of the projects. Um, so there's various ways the state can come back and, 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 you know, look at the funding. But that was the process we went through to pick these. Um, it was, you know, we did spend quite a bit of time going through and really did focus on which projects, um, really had the best chance of getting funding. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brent? So this is kind of relevant to what we were talking about with the budget. I mean, if we do get this, this would save us the town some in energy costs, perhaps, if we were able, if we did get granted, um, the project through the Green Communities. So what we need to do, um, as the Board of Selectmen, is just authorize Jim to sign the grant when it comes, um, when MRPC gets it completed, so that it can be submitted to the state.
I make a motion, will you allow Jim to sign the grant when it gets, gets to us?
Second.
I think that will do it, is there a second?
I did.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, um, any, any further discussion?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, when it says Harbor Fire Station, they mean the big station, correct? Not the, the little station?
Yes.
Great, that's perfect then, thank you.
All right, any further discussion before we vote for Jim to, um, to authorize Jim to sign this, uh, grant, for, uh, the Energy Committee?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Amelius.
Veronica Kell, yes. So, uh, Jim, when it comes back, sign away. And thank you, Brent, for being on the call tonight.
Thank you, I'm, and thank you guys for this. And, and you know, I'd like to say that luckily through Rise, by doing all of these, um, audits, it lines us up great for next year to be able to jump right in and apply once these projects are completed, if we're lucky enough to get them. But hopefully it's also a roadmap for the town for projects that wouldn't be funded through this process to be able to look and see what capital improvements need to be done.
So yeah, that's great, thank you, Brent, for your, whole committee for going forward with this, so thank you. Um, all right, so back to the budget, uh, facilities. So Jim, what I really wanted here was to be able to look at fiscal year 20 and to see what was approved there, fiscal year 19. It looks like it just follows through every year, it's the same thing. And I, I guess my concern a little bit, and those numbers, you know, I'd have to add them up to see what sense I could make of them. I, I really wanted them to be consolidated so that they would match the funding in the budget, but they don't. Uh, so it makes it difficult unless I grab out my calculator and start adding up. But I wanted to go back to the budget and look at a couple of those. Um, like there's one for, um, the bottom one, the facilities travel. 500 was budgeted and 6,500 was spent this year. What's that? Um, and then going up, um, further, there was a communication one that I had questions about. 1,900 is budgeted and looks to be like the normal budget amount. Um, and 10,988 was spent, that's huge. So to me, and, and this is when I told you that this budget was like wacky, that's what I was talking about. There's no, um, there's no correlation. And then I see these large numbers, but not as much spent, and we only have three months left.
Right, and what I explained at several of our Saturday meetings, and again, when we spoke individually, Veronica, is that what you're seeing in these line items in terms of allocation, so you see, you know, the, one of the ones you grabbed, I think it's this right here, 1,900, but there's 10,900 spent, so that's wacky, you know?
It is.
What, it is.
Why, but why? Why is that?
I'll, I'll tell you again, because when these bills were processed throughout the course of the year, they were processed and hit the wrong line items, or wrong accounts. Lori, as I advised you guys at several meetings ago, Lori was going to clean this up, this whole section, and allocate them to the correct lines to show where everything actually is. She didn't get a chance to do that before she left, but one thing, and I reached out today and asked again if she had a chance to, to maybe get that done for tonight, she didn't, she's working a full-time job for another community. But the point that I would make is, we are tracking, if you look, we are tracking to make the year with, and I want to say, I've done the math on the other PDF, so watch for a second, I'll pull up the 21 version. And of course, it comes over here to make life difficult, let's see if we can bring it over here. Now, let me see if I can stop screen sharing and pull up the 21 one. So I'll start screen sharing and I'll do 21 facilities, share. Do people see this one moving?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, while this is truly wacky, you are correct, and it needs to have work done to reallocate it to the correct line. When you look at the bottom line for the facilities budget, so I'm blocked, my comment is blocked by Wayne's face on my screen. I'm glad you take care of that. Uh, no. Um, I'll, I'll try to read through it. Um, if you annualize the expense per month with the three months, we should end with a balance of about 18,500 left at the end of the fiscal year. If you take the annualized, if you take the, the annual amount divided by 12, and then come up with the monthly and multiply by the three we have remaining, just for a guide, we should be about 18.5 to the good. That doesn't mean that's 18.5 that is fluff, or 18.5 that can or should be cut. That's indicative of money that was budgeted pre-COVID when this budget was built, and projects that have not been done. So the takeaway, Veronica, is you, you, you think that there's money in this facility's budget to cut? I disagree. I think that if you look back over, you know, we, we had fiscal 20 up on the screen a moment ago. You know, that one finished out with, you know, 5,000 bucks at the end of the year. Uh, this one, even in the spending freeze, is only going to finish out with 18.5. Um, and while it's true that, you know, the fuel looks like we haven't, or energy looks like we haven't used at all, I don't know that there's actually not a bill that's been allocated to one of those wacko lines that should be applied to the utility line. So that's why I have to look at the bottom line of expense and bottom line of salary. And those numbers, they should, which is, we're trending to come in at a very appropriate level.
And at this point of where we're sitting here trying to figure out a budget, to get a balanced budget, I, I mean, we should have had all these numbers exact by now, we should be talking factual numbers.
We are talking factual numbers, Joe, the bottom, the bottom line is the factual number. And it doesn't lie, it is exactly what it is. We are on track to be exactly where this budget says we should be.
Okay.
Fiscal 20, we finished with $5,000 at the end of the year, and that was driven in large part by, by salary. This, we're trending to be 18.5 at the end of the year. And that's not because that's fluff money, it's because we've told Bo not to do things until we know how, you know, revenue is going to come in this year. Everybody is not able to spend the way they normally would. This budget was built before COVID, so.
I, I would still say that it's hard to judge a budget when you don't have the numbers that are correct on it. And you don't know what the project was that wasn't done, or what was done, or.
Yep, and, and you, you have the ability as the Board of Selectmen to substitute your judgment for Bo's, the department head, or mine as the town administrator. Our advice is to not cut this because it is a sound and solid budget. And it's what we have over the years, if you look back, those numbers haven't changed on the expense side markedly, and they're not likely to.
I, I would like to see a real facilities, um, budget, is what I would like to see. And I would like to see the fiscal year 20 without zeros and numbers of actual expenses next to it.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, go to the budget, fiscal year 20, in those lines, there is zeros.
Yeah.
I know that you have the expenditure ledgers, but I, I guess I'm, I'm still not understanding why I can't see fiscal year 20 except at zero. And what I would like to see is what was actually spent on each of those line items, or even fiscal year 19.
And, and that's.
And, and yeah, you're, you're pointing to the bottom line, and I understand what you're saying there.
I'm not, on the fiscal year 20, the spreadsheet that I had up for fiscal 20.
Put up the budget.
This is fiscal 20's actual expenditure ledger. So this is the budget that comes right out of the financial system.
Okay, so which of those numbers goes into line 1, 277? Which of those numbers goes into line, you know, 278? Which of those numbers, et cetera, et cetera? You're, you're showing a ledger, and I understand that, and it's for each of the buildings. But what, what I would like, unless it's those zeros down at the bottom where it says energy, water, repair and maintenance building, communication, other service, office supplies, and there's zeros all across there. I, I don't know, I'm totally, I would like to see, pull up the budget and go to facilities, and I'll tell you what I want.
You want to see what these are for fiscal 20?
Go to the budget, please.
I thought I, no?
No, your screen sharing, the other stuff that you're moving.
Okay, well, I've, I've been playing on the screen over here thinking you were watching.
No, we're not.
So these right here.
We don't see anything yet, Jim, you aren't screen sharing yet.
No?
Yes, yes, those right there, the highlighted ones.
Yep.
I would like to see numbers. I would like to see numbers there. And then I would like a column squeezed in that shows the actual expended for each of those line items.
So I gotta shrink this so you can see it a little bit. I'm sorry.
I mean, I guess I'm wondering why it why it isn't the way it is for all the others.
Because a prior board wanted to see it broken out by building like you're showing on the screen right now. And the next board didn't. So it was combined again as it had been in years prior. So these are, this is the fiscal 20. Let me get cursor on the right page here. So this is the land use department fiscal 20 approved column is right here. This is Dudley Road, electricity, gas, water, all the way down. And there's 272 Main Street, electricity, gas, all the way down. So each building. And then in the prior year, you see all those zeros because in the prior year it was done this way. It was done one lump sum, energy, one lump sum, utilities, and all the way down. So then this year, that experiment was lovely, and then it didn't exist anymore. It went back to the way it had always been, which is in lump sums. The point I make to you is if you look at the expenses, 213, 194, 195, 194. They have been fairly consistent, irregardless, regardless, either. Regardless of which way it was it was demonstrated on the screen, the bottom line for expenses in facilities has maintained the same flat line for years. So if there is an accounting, Veronica, for these specific lines right here, a year-to-date expended, an end-of-year expended, I'll try to get that for you.
Actually, what might be more useful is to, since that's the way you did it in that year, is to do that for this year so that we can compare apples to apples.
Nightmare. This, from an accountant's perspective, I was advised very quickly was an absolute nightmare to try to break everything apart because we get a Verizon bill, we get a Unitil bill, and it's the account for the town of Townsend. It has 72 pages and they had to go through and they had to break things apart. And it was a nightmare. That's why it didn't last more than a year. And we went back to the bulk account. So
Well, the bulk account is fine, but you can't compare when you have one way and another way. And you can't make decisions based on that.
You can on the bottom line, but you don't want to do that. I understand.
I would like to know, I, we are doing dollar for dollar here. I mean, we're, we're trying to squeeze money out of places. And if you're going to squeeze money out of places, you not, you need to know whether or not you can do that. And there's no way to do that if you aren't using the same manner of comparison.
That's fair. I agree with you.
And I guess, you know, if I, it's probably been at least a month since I asked to have those facilities numbers put where they should be.
And how long has Lori been gone?
I don't know. What, two weeks?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have access to the system. I asked her the audit going on that she was trying to, which is far more important to the community than that right there. I can only tell you what I can tell you.
Okay, don't. All right. So we leave facilities as is. We don't have money there. Despite the fact that there was money that was not spent last year, more than likely, $18,000. So that's going into the general fund if you're using your estimate.
That would be this year, not last year.
Well, the current, the year we're sitting in right now. Not the year that we're looking towards.
Right. And again, Veronica, I don't, I don't want to seem like I'm raining on your parade. If you, if you think that there's the ability
Oh, no, you're not raining on my parade. I'm just looking for money.
And I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, based on what I've seen in the five budgets I've been involved in, it ain't there. That's all.
Extend salary for personal services contracts. But we won't go there. Let's keep going.
You have to live with that.
Cheap thing.
Why? Did they have a conversation about that?
Because, Joe, because this budget has nothing to do with personal services contracts. So that was just gratuitous, unnecessary. That's all.
Perhaps. Okay, keep going.
Not perhaps.
I don't think so, because there's money allocated in here.
I, you know, if there's no money to be had, what do we do? We start cutting positions. That's where we have to go. If we have a
We're still going down the list. We've got half a budget yet to go. So
Well, there isn't much more for me to say if in fact there isn't anything to be cut.
Well, we don't know what other members of the board are thinking until we
Well, I have, I have a couple to jump ahead. One is the paving. I think you have 50,000 set aside for that one right now.
Yeah.
That's not going to pay for anything.
It's a good faith thing.
I know, I understand that. I
It's a good faith thing. We have a bylaw. Do we have a bylaw in this town? I know we
And Andrew's credit, to Andrew's credit, she said
I know. And I am the one that said I wanted to see it on the warrant every year anyway. Because otherwise it will never be had. And I guess my thing is if we're not going to do that, we didn't do it last year. We didn't fund it last year. If we're not going to fund it this year, then why do we have the bylaw? Meanwhile,
I want
town is yelling about the streets need paved, the streets need paved. Well, if we as a town do not start putting money away to pave the streets, no, the streets are not going to pave. They're only going to get paved at the rate that we have chapter 90 Monday to fund it. And if we don't start having some budget discipline to put that away, then we won't. Because if we're balancing the budget on, then there you go. It's gone.
Let's see, they're cut positions, which I am firmly against. So
Joe, where are you on the 50,000 that's being held aside for pavement?
Well, I think we should, and that's a huge topic with people come through my door every day. The roads in Townsend are disgusting, this and that. Go to Loonberg, look what they did. That's all beautiful. I have to agree with Ronnie that if we don't start doing something, we're going to be in trouble.
Okay, so that's two of you. So we stay away from that. So let's continue down the list and see if there's anything else that
What was yellow at the top of there? Back it back up, please.
That's police. That's police contract issue. It's listed in yellow because they have opted out of Collins that everybody else is in. There's an amount being carried. You may remember when we started the discussion on the forecast summary sheet, there's an amount being carried at the bottom of the sheet.
Make that just a little bigger. You can't see them numbers.
Yep.
I apologize. All right, that's good.
So we're looking right here. That's listed as union discussion because they've, unlike other positions tied to Collins, the police union is asked to not be tied to Collins and negotiate within the pay grade in their contract. So that's why that's yellow. So then we get down, this one doesn't need to be yellow any longer. It was there just to flag the discussion that Chief Boyton and I were having. He has sent me a writing where he indicates that he believes there's the ability to pay his per diem medics the $25 an hour that he would like to. In fact, he believes perhaps even getting to the 26 range. That'll be a discussion for the Board of Selectmen to consider with him sometime before the beginning of the fiscal year. So this doesn't need to be yellow any longer because it's sufficient. So that's fire EMS. We then get to comm center. We then get to building commissioner. The inspectors. Then get to emergency management. Animal control, tree warden, burial agent, parking clerk, all relatively small peanuts. Education, we have done as much as we're going to do there. You then get to highway. This is yellowed because it is the admin position that was once in the budget and been zeroed out. So I wanted to make certain that that was in everybody's vision. Next, we get down to landfill, cemetery parks. As discussed, upped this budget after the first round to put it to the level funded budget that had been submitted by the Board of Cemetery Parks Commissioners with the exception of the porta potties. That was brought out. Housing Authority, Board of Health, Associated Landfill Engineering. This is one that we had had plugged in at 30,000. I did get confirmation from the Board of Health that the contract value is 19.9. So I wanted to make certain everybody saw that. So that one's good.
Is that because that was a two-year contract at 30?
It's a, no, actually, this year we've got a three-year and it's 19.9 going forward.
Okay.
So then you have the council on aging. And this one, I've got highlighted to bring something to your attention. I've spoken to some of you, but I don't think everybody collectively. This actually says, when you get to the whole note there, it says Collins Center corrected. So here's the story. The Collins Center created, I've shared with you guys at one point or another, their massive spreadsheet that has every position with 12 or 14 factors, which are like confidentiality, level of supervision, judgment and initiative, things that positions get rated on. And then there's a point value that's associated with each of those factors based on this tool that the consultant has. And it tallies at the end of the sheet with a total number. And depending on your total number, you fit in a grade. So you remember we have grade A, B, C, D, E, and F. The person who holds this position was was bothered by the fact that the position was rated in the grade that it was rated in, looking at the other positions in town and where they were rated. And we agreed to get together and have a discussion about it.
Who's we?
She and I.
Okay.
Being of this position. So we sat down and I pulled up the the sheet from Collins. And on one of the the cells in the Collins spreadsheet, she was given a three rating, but it had zero points assigned to it. There's a little tick mark in the corner of the cell. Those of you that are Excel people, you can click that and it gives you an error message. It said inconsistent formula. Copy formula from above, you hit that and it dropped 30 points in, which is what it should have been. Then changed her tally at the end of the sheet, bumped her into the grade where the other positions in town that she is like are graded. So that resulted in putting
Is that that number that me and you had conversation about? Is that?
That is indeed the one. Yes.
38% increase?
I don't know that it was that high. It was 30 something, but I think I have it.
So, and once again, I would love 38% increase in my pay.
But it's a, it was a misclassification.
Yeah. And I get it.
I get It should be.
See, and this goes to the bigger, more philosophical question that Joe and I talked about today, which is, you know, you're, you're either, you know, it's like you can't be a little bit pregnant type of deal. You know, we're either going to do Collins and adopt what the independent neutral paid professional says is what the market rates are for these positions or not. And I had, you'll remember, I had advocated in the beginning of this process that we not do Collins this year. I thought it was going to be too expensive and I didn't make any friends in the building when I was saying that at public meetings, but you know, that's where we were. You guys wanted to go forward, so that was the marching orders I took. So I set out to to get it all covered. We then took the next step of saying, if it's less than a 2%, take it to the next step. So I set out to make that happen. So that's what we have here. And this isn't kind of a one-size-fits-all where everybody's going to get a point, you know, 75% raise. And people that are are paid on the market and people that are way below are going to get that same little bump. What's meant to happen when you do a comp and class plan is you get everybody up to a market comparability. Some people that have been being well underpaid for years are going to get a significant increase. Others that have been being paid within the market, within reason, are going to get a lesser increase. But that's what these are about. So again, you can't be a little bit pregnant. You're either going to do a comp and class plan and implement it, or you're not. This, this is implementing it. So I just wanted to bring that one position to everybody's attention. Let me get back down because I lost where I was.
So just working numbers so we're in the green when you get to the bottom.
I can get you there. All right. So that's that one.
What were those other ones?
This is the ones we just did. That's the landfill engineering and
All right. Did I just yell?
The director. Oh, yeah. Good call. Thanks. Somehow I got back into the online version of this document, so I'm going to have to clean that after. Unless I can find it down here. Try here. Now it's over here. Oh, Lord. All right. So we're back down here. This is the one we were working in.
I saw a bunch of yellow just facilities.
No, that was, that was the union stuff that I was keeping off the screen because it's union negotiation stuff. So we get down here is where we were. All right, right here is where we were. So this one, Joe, you're right, can become white. And then that one becomes white. This one, you remember, we had a presentation about reorganizing the Council on Aging. So that's a $20,000 jump from last year.
That was because we brought somebody on, right?
Yep. Then you get down to library. Recreation. Memorial Day.
Jim?
Yes.
Back to recreation?
Yes.
I know that. Oh, it's a Collins Center. Okay.
But that's a new question.
Yeah, it's a new position funded not from the funds they bring in, which is the way it used to be funded. I, I have some trouble supporting that. I think at least in this year, it should be supported the way it was always supported. Not put into another category.
The, the reason I think you're seeing that requested that way this year is because the revolving fund from which it normally was being paid cannot support it as of right now.
Right. But then once it appears in the budget as a position, it will stay in the budget. It will never go back to being supported the other way.
I understand what you're saying.
And I, I'm, I'm sure the position was needed. It's just, it's a new expense and it's not sizable, but it's not trifling either. But I think we voted on that, didn't we, as a board?
Yes, we did.
So why are we gonna, why are we going to go backwards on that? We had that discussion, right? Yeah, but you were cutting budgets now and you're looking at everything. You You want to cut other positions. You voted on the webmaster as well. And you cut that, and so maybe you should look at the other positions that you look forward as well.
We just pinned the webmaster, Andrea, we did not cut it. Am I correct?
Correct, Joe.
What's that?
You're correct.
Yeah, we did not cut it, Andrea, we pinned it at this point.
All right, but you talked about doing away with it. Because you yourself said it was necessary, which I don't agree with either, but that's all right. You should maybe look at all the positions, pin this one for all of that. But it's something, it's an expense that's new.
Maybe that becomes a finance committee discussion, Andrea, because I think the board has already made themselves pretty clear on this one.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, I know Wayne, you've just spoken that you're you're in line with Andrea on it perhaps, but I know that Veronica and Joe have been pretty clear.
Where in the budget here?
So then you get down to debt. Those are all fixed. County retirement is fixed. Unemployment, health insurance. Now, back to the issue of health insurance. You have a one-month holiday that is available. I've advocated against it. I think it's a tricky thing because if the bill is in, as you see, I'll make it bigger. If the bill is in fact, right here, there's $892,000, but they're gonna give us one month off, which they are. We could divide that by 12 and reduce it by, you know, one of those months. But next year, this is the number that they're starting from again, not the one-month-less number.
Right.
So, I mean, so that's something to, I'm going to highlight that just because it actually is something that you've not voted on as a board. I presume to not have it highlighted any longer, but you haven't given direction.
Jim, wasn't there some discussion about, because of contractual agreement, we're sort of stuck in MMA? But after a year, we could launch off and do our health insurance a different way?
The short answer, yes, but that's not an easy answer. Right now, in Massachusetts, under Chapter 32B, the Select Board and not town meeting are authorized to to deal with health insurance issues. So there's an obligation to negotiate with the unions on any type of a change like that.
All right.
A change in terms and conditions of which health insurance is one. At the end of the day, however, the legislature provided Sections 19 through 21 of Chapter 32B that allow the Select Board to make unilateral changes in health insurance if they can't come to agreement at the table. The one bone that's thrown to the employee groups in that move is if you try to negotiate change and it's not able to be done at the table and the selectmen invoke those sections and they do it unilaterally, any savings they realize, 25% of savings have to go to the employees. So it becomes a calculation about how much do you save at the end of that process? And is it worth the ill will you create in having gone down that road?
Yes, thank you.
Then you get down to general property liability. This is a 3% increase and we've been good at that number in prior years. We do have the the underwriters currently working up our fiscal 22 numbers. But that's still yellow because right now it's just a plug. So do the members of the Select Board have a thought on the 11-month versus 12-month health insurance number?
I want to go back and see where we are as far as the whole goes before I have a thought on that.
Right, so back to forecast summary. Well, for some reason, we've gone in the wrong direction.
And what? We didn't add anything.
That can't be. But now we're another 26 further out than we were.
We didn't add anything.
No, we didn't.
We took stuff away even.
Yeah.
Unless we have a zero issue somewhere that noticed, but you know, when we changed a couple of things, because if anything, we should have gone-
Not even 10,000 dollars, so.
Um, I mean, I thought we went down by about $10,000.
Yeah, let's-
If you go back to lines, 13, 19.
Let's see, we are up top making those.
Yeah.
So I guess if we're still out, and I guess I'm gonna have to say, Wayne, you mentioned it, right? Well, we're gonna have to cut things. Well, I think this is gonna throw a monkey wrench at everybody. Everyone's gonna have a shit show on this one. But then why are we hiring new employees if we're gonna think we might have to cut somebody? That's just ludicrous.
So the professional services didn't change?
Yeah. This is back to where we were. So, yeah, this is the original. I just went back to the one that we weren't on just to make sure that-
Oh, I see, yeah.
Right, so I would just go through again and make those changes. But again, it was around 10 grand, so we weren't closing $95,000.
No, we weren't, but-
So as my statement I just made, I don't think anyone heard it or maybe no one cared, but-
I heard you, Joe, and I'm with you. I'm not hiring new people if we have to cut people. I don't-
You know, I mean, this is ludicrous and I have all the respect in the world, fire, police, highway safety, everybody, but I would never be able to support bringing on a new police officer, lieutenant, firefighter, whatever, if we think we're coming to this number and we have to cut somebody. Well, touch be life, man. We gotta, we gotta make the right things for our community.
Well, we just did it today, though, Joe, we did.
Well, I know, I know we did, but-
And so that's-
We need to really pay attention to what we're really doing in town. Great to have, then yeah, I want everything. We all want, want, want. But if you can't afford it, what are we gonna do?
Well, there's one position we didn't talk about and that was land use coordinator, which you increased up to 35 hours last week, I believe.
Yep.
Fill that position increase up to that. But it hasn't been filled for quite a while.
Right, and it's needed, Andrea.
Everything is needed. Every cut you made is needed. We've gotten along without it. Bets is filled in, things are moving along.
Not really.
It's something we can't afford.
We don't have a single document that's up to date, Andrea. Not a single one. The person who receives that is the land use coordinator. And, you know, we don't have, we can't go out for grants if we don't have those documents.
Sometimes going, okay.
I just think that it would, it's a bad call to remove that position. We can remove the webmaster, maybe someone will volunteer, but I don't see volunteers knocking down the doors.
There's a great deal of difference, though, of a salary of $6,000, the salary of a land use coordinator, if you're worried about saving money. I would rather lose a land use coordinator than a police officer.
But we're talking, I'm not talking losing a police officer, Andrea. We've just put on a new lieutenant for, how much was that lieutenant's position that we just filled?
That was budgeted for last year too, Joe.
Yeah, and it was, it was a plan that everybody bought and was put back. It's been put into place for quite a while for him to work up to.
You know, but we gotta just make sure we're all on the same page. We're finally bringing someone back in, I get it. But we can't be thinking cutting employees. That just doesn't work.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
I think employees are an asset we gotta do, but I think, my opinion, and I got myself in trouble earlier here, I just think we need to tighten the reins on what we're doing in the community. We are a small community. We're 8,900 people, 9,000 people that are taking the burden of taxes of all this. Every time we as a board of selectmen, and I'm gonna blame myself because now I'm sitting here, I'm on the other side. Every time we make a move or we do something, we're penalizing the entire community. And this is why we need to really look at it, try to figure out what we're gonna do to make it right for everybody. And some are pretty tough to deal with. But the problem is, there hasn't been many people that want to stick their neck out and speak the piece.
Go back to that front page, Jim. I think that might be, see if those numbers have changed.
Yeah, it's gone down to 88 and change.
Okay, all right, so I don't know what that was about, but-
So, I mean, we're still in the deficit and we're gonna be here until tomorrow morning, so I hope someone brings-
Maybe you should reconsider what Mr. Miller proposed. $50,000 won't do a lot of roadwork, even though it's there, and I know what you said, Veronica, and technically I agree with you, but letting the money come out of the budget would probably be a good thing because 50,000, it'll be a savings towards more money being added maybe next year or the year after or something if you re-
I'm gonna move, we moved that bylaw. No point in having a bylaw where we're gonna save to pave the roads if in fact we have no intention of doing it.
It's not the intention. The intention is there, it's the money that isn't there.
And it's not gonna be, Andrea.
Oh, certainly it will. Well, we're- Because I figure we've had the COVID year and just before the COVID year has been very bad. It takes about three years to recover.
Has nothing to do with COVID.
I disagree a little on that one. Because we, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, we could have put that in the budget last year and we would have been okay, correct?
We were balanced.
You did it.
Yeah, we were balanced and I don't think that there was the ability to do 50 last year. I mean, I think at the end of the-
Well, without cut, without making more cuts, right?
There were no cuts.
But we also budgeted for a 2% increase that didn't get passed, so.
It's, the schools suck out all our money.
I know, that's, everybody knows that.
And it's not gonna change. And as long as it, I mean, we're on borrowed money this year because Jim convinced them to do what they should have done. And so-
We'll just keep it tight next year too, though, you know what I mean? It, what we need to do as a board, we need to put our foot down to the schools and we need to just as communities, all three towns, Ashby Towns and Inpeple, stick together as a team, as a unit, and say, we can't do it. So just, it's no different than what we're doing right here. We can't do it as a community. Why should we allow a school to just run us? Let them go cut, let them go, the Mandarin Chinese teacher or whatever, or the yoga teacher, let them figure it out instead of us always out.
Yeah, and I agree, Joe, and I think this is the first year that I've been on the board that we actually got them to move. They balked at this three years in a row, diving into their free cash. And I think it was very clear at the last meeting, Jim, that I were on, that, you know, they see the, an override coming. They keep going down this path.
They're not gonna move next year. You can tell, they conceded this year, but they're, and they probably conceded because they're gonna use COVID, they're gonna try to help out, you know, obviously because of COVID. But just from what I've been listening to, I can't see them doing that next year because-
No, I know, but we gotta point out, and Jim, if I'm wrong, we have a pattern of their so-called free cash, I forget the actual term.
Deficiency.
It's been the same and growing year over year over year, which to Jim's point has been, they're over assessing us. That needs to change. And that is my demand.
And I think Jim and Wayne, you guys work really hard at that and I commend you for putting your foot down. It's time somebody puts the foot down here.
So as we are now, folks, we're 88 and change out. If I go back to the budget tab here, while you were talking, I did this little bit of math. So if you do the one-month holiday, it saves $74,345 against-
But does that just truly get us in trouble next year worse?
Well, next year, if we stayed status quo next year and didn't change the health plan, we'd be looking at this number plus whatever increase the industry says. I think the message has been loud and clear to the employee groups that this year is status quo on benefits. Next year, everything is up for discussion and negotiation. To point, Joe, we have a health insurance plan right now that while it has co-pays for things like if you go to, you know, a specialist, you pay 35 bucks. If you go for an R.I., you pay 100. But we don't have any deductibles, which is really unusual.
Well, yeah, I mean, even my employees are insurance. I mean, we all, even myself, I have to, you know, in order to have a good insurance, I get it, but you gotta have some deductibles in. Me, even as an employer, I can't absorb that cost of my employees. So you have to go to them and they understand you. They gotta have some kind of deductibles, I get it, we gotta take care of them, but this is reality, man.
So between now and this time next year, if the board is successful in negotiating a reduced level of benefits or an increased level of contribution from an employee, either in the terms of a higher percentage of premium paid or putting a plan in that has a deductible which will cost less, then this isn't a bad deal, taking this 11-month budget number because we're coming in on or around that place if we're able to reduce the overall cost by changing the benefit structure.
But if that gets us the ball, I mean, what's that leave us, 10,000 out at that point?
Yep.
Zero deductible for health insurance for-
It doesn't work that, no one does it anymore.
Nobody, it can't be done.
I work for a multi-billion dollar company and I have deductible.
I have my own corporation, I have to take a deductible because you can't pay those kind of premiums.
Yeah, so my feeling is to take that one year, put that 74 towards the deficit that we have. That leaves us 10,000 we gotta to find. And I think, Jim, something you work with on the facilities and, you know, nickel and diming the rest of the budget.
Yep.
In my opinion, if we think that's what we can do and get it done, let's just approve this budget. Just not, how many more budget meetings do we want to have?
We can't have anymore because we gotta be done with this.
Yeah, we gotta approve all this tonight so we can get ready to go send out to, oh, jeez, what was that? Did someone just see a message up there from somebody?
I'm not paying attention to that.
I was looking at the screen.
I just wanna get the budget done.
Yeah, me too, because it's going on 9:15 already.
I think the 50,000 or, how about, how about we do this? How about?
We're out 10, if we're out 10, you know, do 40,000.
Sorry then, Jim.
How about?
What in the heck?
We were to do 40,000 instead of 50, it's something-
Yeah, I agree, Joe. I think that's smart.
Change that number, hold on.
Do you hear that, Ronnie?
The budget is keyed to that one.
She's laughing.
Eight seventeen, seven ninety six, eight seventeen, seven ninety six. So I gotta blow that away and hard key, eight seventeen, nine forty six. That should carry forward to the budget. It does, and it should carry forward to the forecast summary. Okay, so we're twelve, six out.
So why don't we just?
No, go ahead, Joe.
Why don't we just, you know, the save everybody, you know, we got, we got what we got right now. Put forty thousand dollars in. I know it's not fifty, but put forty in.
So I think that I can, I can squeeze nickels and dimes out of people to cover that twelve, six and leave the fifty, which is what the bylaw calls for.
Okay.
In there. If 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 the board, I mean, I heard two of you say that you feel strongly that the fifty should be left, so I'm saying that in light.
If we, and if you can't find the nickels and dime there, Jim, I would just follow Joe's suggestion on doing forty instead of fifty.
Jim says he can find it. Let him find it.
Yep, and so.
Done, just done with it.
Let me see B O S again, Jim. Where are we with B O S? Students memberships. What's that usually?
The MMA, there's an annual membership.
Pay that this year?
Uh, it probably just hasn't processed through yet.
Okay.
But that usually comes out of there. I know in the past that there's been like the ICMA, there's been a membership for the town administrator that's been out of there. I don't have that paid, so.
Okay, all right. All right.
So do we have to make a motion or vote for where we are?
I think as a, as a as a close to done, if if you guys are all in agreement with everything that's been said tonight, I know we had a couple pins and things, but if we're good leaving it as it is right now with that deficit of twelve, six, twenty two for me to wrestle with, take that vote and I'll come back at the next meeting with that cleaned up. I'll consult with each of you kind of offline to make certain I'm not marching down a road that that I ought not to, but.
When does this need to be finalized?
The warrant needs to be posted. We go to the calendar. Coming up on the twentieth, I I think.
I thought it was the sixteen.
That's the inflection warrant, I believe, is the sixteenth. The town meeting warrant's gonna be two weeks before the fourth of May, so.
Which is our regular meeting on the twentieth, right?
Yeah, the twentieth. So I've got to have this done before that because obviously I have to get the budget converted into the warrant fashion,
Right.
which is never fun.
And we, we only pinned, but we're leaving that six thousand dollars there for that web, web designer, web person, correct?
It's in there still, yeah.
Okay. So we really, I mean, I I think out of how many, what's our, what's our total budget here? That, our total?
Yep.
What is the amount?
Twenty five million, five hundred thousand.
So if you can't find what you say, twelve thousand dollars out of a twenty five million dollar budget, we might have a serious problem in town.
Yeah.
From my opinion, I really think we should vote on this budget, knowing that we'll have
Go on, I'll figure it out.
Needs to mute. And I think we need to vote on it and put that to rest. I I know, we could hammer this budget from now until the cows come home. I think we're close. Tell Jim to get it done and just deal with it.
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys are are good with what you've done tonight, let me get this to you for your meeting next week. Joe, I know you're not there next week, but I'll be able to talk to you leading up to it, let you know where I'm going. And I'll present it out for final vote next Tuesday night. That'll give me time to get it put together in time for the warrant being posted the following week.
Jim?
Yeah. Yes, Lynn? Lynn's been abducted.
Maybe. Lynn, are you there?
Yeah, I'm back. My internet keeps going in and out. Okay, my question is, when we get this approved, will the people actually see the raise they haven't had in years?
Depends on what person you're talking to. If I talk from the union perspective collectively, yes. If you talk to individuals, some people are gonna be thrilled, some people less. Because in the same bargaining unit, there are gonna be people that are getting a greater increase than somebody sitting to their left or their right. So you you hope that everybody's gonna be happy?
But that was, that's not what I'm asking. I'm not asking about how much they're getting. I just wanna know that there were people that did not get a raise for three years, I believe.
Three years.
Two years?
They, they get the increase only if the contract is finalized and accepted, voted. If the contract is not voted, the increase does not happen. They stay with those F Y nineteen numbers, if I remember, if I understand what's going on here.
That is correct. The one thing I'll say too, Lynn, is this board, well, this, to a degree, this board and prior board, put money on the table, got town meeting to authorize it, but the union members did not accept the money. So while it's true they didn't get a raise for two years, they had opportunities. They just didn't think it.
So the people that didn't get a raise are the ones in the union?
Correct. That is correct.
It's nearly everybody. Last year, I think there were maybe two people that saw their salaries go up.
People with personal services contracts.
Right, I know the contract people got it, but.
Not everybody. I think just one person who had a contract got it. Maybe, actually, maybe. Maybe Anna did as well, yeah.
Anna and Laurie got increases last year. I don't think anybody else did.
No one else.
Certain.
Because I, I know people think we go in and we approve this budget. So people think everybody got their money, when in reality they didn't.
Well, I think all the top employees as far as, you know, people working in in the offices and stuff, I think institute and the Collins Institute, and I may be wrong, I don't, I don't know if every employee in town hall or town employees in the union. Am I correct on that?
Very few people are not. So you got the, the people who have personal service contracts, so myself, the chiefs, the town accountant who's not here now, but did, the treasurer and the library director. Then you have, everybody else is in the union except the executive assistant in the selectmen union because it's a confidential position. The, the executive assistant to the police chief.
So I guess, Lynn, what you're asking is, we as the board are appropriate in doing the Collins and moving them up that way, but if they don't accept the negotiations that are gonna start, I do believe tomorrow, then I guess there's not much the Board of Selectmen can really do if they as, as a bargaining don't want what we're offering, but I think what we're offering, the institute, the Collins Institute is a great start. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes. But the.
But Lynn, no one's guaranteed a raise in a union unless it's negotiated, so. We're, we're putting planning on it, but it's not approved, so the budget is, we have the money in the budget to negotiate that.
They turn us down.
Exactly. We do the same thing we did last year. I mean, they, they had a two percent raise on the, the table and they said no to Jim's point a few minutes ago, so.
Okay. So it's up to the union.
So make sure you tell everyone that's in, and they get to pay attention.
So do I, do I have a consensus absent a vote from the board that everything you've gone over tonight is locked in place? There's twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty two that I've gotta comb through and I'll speak with each of you offline to make certain I'm not stepping on any landmines. But next Tuesday, I'll come back with this thing balanced.
Yes.
Have a meeting next Tuesday?
I'll have to deal with you in advance, Joe, because I know you're not gonna be available, but I'll make certain I don't, I don't recommend anything that's gonna, gonna step on a toe with you. But that, we need to have it done next Tuesday because I have to have the warrant finalized and posted the following week, so we need to have it done.
Okay. Okay, well.
Do we need a motion?
I make a motion. We accept the budget as talked about and changed this evening with the twelve thousand dollar deficit that Jim is going to work on, get back to all of us individually and get it to a zero, a balanced budget.
A second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor? Robert's Rules of Order. All those in favor?
O'Shea, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, so let, we're all set with this discussion.
The mundo.
All right, warrant review.
Madam Chair, there's not gonna be a lot to, to review tonight except things that have come in since the second, which is the close of the special town meeting. So everything that was in the annual town meeting warrant, oh, I'm not sharing yet, am I? Sorry.
You are not, and I, I disagree with you, Jim, because I have things to say. I, I really wanted to see a more filled warrant than what we have here. And there are a couple things that I wanted to talk about, so. So these are the beginning of the A T M, right?
This is the S T M.
Special Town. There were two articles on there, but there were two that came in, correct?
There are actually three additionals that came in, so this was stuff that was out in the selectmen's shared file. We have police, police and fire capital article reauthorization. So this is one where they had specific language about a microwave, you know, something or other. It needs to be more generally worded. So that's just come in for the special. The fire chief has IV pumps that were recalled that the insurance company paid for. The money went back into the budget, needed to slide back through. And he had forgotten about it until just in time for the special town meeting, so this is nine thousand dollars for that, and that's ambulance receipts reserved. So this is no cost because it's reauthorizing existing article.
I wanna talk about that, but let's go on down.
And this is cost to the ambulance receipts reserved, not the general, so it doesn't impact the budget. And then the other one that came in, in time for the special is to see if the town will vote to authorize the recreation to enter into a short term lease of space for summer recreation program with funding to be paid from the blank or take any action in relation there too. To your point earlier, that they used to be able to use the schools.
Right.
They used Squanah Cook for some period of time. They used Spalding for some period of time, and they're not getting any traction with that.
I thought they used Hawthorne Brook last summer.
They, they may have a little bit, but I don't believe in, in large part that they did. They were using the.
They didn't have, they didn't have one last summer, did they?
Yeah, they did.
They used the Great Hall. You may remember that we had the front doors open and people coming in and I think you asked the specific question, if we're letting rec kids in, why don't we have public meetings and I?
Now, that was because of the school year program to cover, you know, remote learning. That's what that was.
You're right.
That wasn't summer.
That was not summer rec.
You're right.
Summer, I don't know why I thought it was at, maybe at Hawthorne Brook and at Balding. I'm not sure. In any event.
They've used a number of schools in the past and they don't have any traction this year. So they, they either are not gonna have a program or they need to find a place to lease space.
Right.
And you can't, as a municipality, lease space without a town meeting authorization, so this is the article that comes in for that.
And do we, do we anticipating having anything more specific, like a cost?
Well, they, they would have to do a procurement, so you can't identify a space or a cost until you have, I mean, you can put a, you can put a not to exceed amount and then put the bid out and hope you get somebody that says, yes, I have a property that meets those specifications that I'll do for that sum. Or somebody else says, I'll do it for less.
Yeah, I thought there needed to be sort of financial parameters.
Yep, yeah, they will.
Well, they're gonna figure, I have to figure out how to pay for that then, right?
Right, I mean.
So why won't the schools allow the rec department? I, I mean, they're kind of, the town's, every, all three towns' property, for God's sakes. I mean, I think this falls right back into what you have to say. You said earlier, Ronnie, that, you know, the schools are their own little thing and we're the bad guys. We can't get to them. It's ludicrous.
Maybe the schools will put a bid in and say they'll, they'll lease the space for a nickel or something.
That, that's what they do with the soccer fields. They, I think they charge us five thousand dollars a year for Tayside to use them. And I know they do the same for lacrosse.
So.
Okay.
Without spending an hour on that, that came in, so that is the entirety of the, the.
On the capital reauthorization.
Yes.
That is the tower that we were going to redo, correct?
Yes, I think that, I don't know if Jay is still on the call. He was, but I, I know that there was some very specific language in the article that is no longer gonna be an appropriate piece of technology, so they, they need the same type of, they need the capital to do what they're hoping to do, but they can't do it with the language, the way it was worded, so.
And I, I, but the, okay, maybe these questions are for the chief then.
And we're gonna have a discussion about.
Later.
General issue later, so. Either you can do it either now or then, whatever, your pleasure.
That should, I think that should go under executive session, Ronnie.
Yeah, my, my problem, my issue, so to speak, I guess I have a lot of issues, but my concern is that we did the capital planning last year, authorized that money and what I had said that, well, it wasn't enough money to redo the tower, that the amount has changed, but that we will still need to redo the tower. So that I have a little bit of a concern there because we, we aren't rolling in capital. So I, I guess, I don't know. So I, I guess, I don't know when you want to talk about this now or later. Later, better.
Yeah, I think they'll, they'll be able to explain if in fact there's pivot to a, a new model.
I mean, we can always vote the article down. I mean, put it on and then we'll talk.
It's on. I mean, the selectmen don't have the ability to kick articles off that have been submitted. So
Right, right.
So it's on.
Okay.
So that's the special. We then get into the annual. And nothing has changed in the annual, except I've started adding in some of the um the articles at the end of the, okay, so here's the here's the capital one. It, it has the note loader 170K. If we can't use the 140 in premium refund, Veronica, that we had been talking about. Bond counsel says that this isn't an appropriate borrow for that. So I made a note that if, if you change it instead, 170K for 10 years. It's, it goes to 21K a year instead of 12.5 a year.
So when will we know if we can redirect the 140?
Yet we cannot. Bond counsel.
Cannot?
Cannot. Bond counsel said that it's not the same category of borrowing that the premium refund um, came from. So it's not an appropriate use. So this is a capital planning committee discussion more than anything else. I just wanted to highlight that it's
Do we have a capital planning committee?
We do.
Made up of
Wayne and Chris Nocella and Chaz and they've met and they voted this plan. So this is the plan unless voted to be amended between now and the setting of the warrant. So this is the plan. They submitted it to the board of selectmen in the first meeting of March as the bylaw requires.
I, I just don't think it's a good idea to do a, even a 10 year lease.
It's not a lease. It's a, it's an outright purchase through borrowing. The town owns it.
Well, still borrowing for 10 years or whatever. I, I just don't think that's a good plan. Okay, go ahead.
There's the PEG access one we talked about earlier.
Yep. Okay. So here, here's where I'll jump in. All right.
Then we get down to the um periodic inspections and property verification for the assessors. So this is actually the number that's going to be going in here is 29,500. That's um, coming by vote of the elected board of assessors. So I'll have that added in. Uh, the last payment on the Chief Bailey agreement is the next article.
Wording there, did you change it? It said in the article, it said second and it's supposed to be third. So to fund the third of three installments is my understanding.
That is in fact true. Third of three. Then we get to general business. Um, so I have the language in for the dog license increases. So this is the language that comes in from
No, that's the marijuana tax. You don't have the dog license in.
Whoa, yeah, sorry. Uh, dog licenses, actually, there's a, there's another version in your file, a version three then. So this is the marijuana retail.
We didn't focus on that.
Yeah. Do you guys want to do this or no? Because you haven't taken a vote yet. There's still a question mark.
We haven't voted on that and I think right now, well, um, do we have a motion?
To do what? To vote on?
If we get, if we, one, we have, there's a 3% tax that we automatically get from the business.
All right. Okay. So do I have to read that whole thing or what do I need to read?
No, 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 no. Well, all you need to, um, we haven't voted to establish the marijuana tax. And so um, so we can motion and discuss.
I make a motion. We have a 3% marijuana tax on retail.
And or, no, and
It's called, it's any marijuana related. If they cultivate in some back building somewhere, you still get 3%.
It's all, all the joke, it's retail, medical and cultivation, just to cover them all.
All, all you want to do is make a motion to put the marijuana tax acceptance on the warrant.
That's, that's fair.
I make a motion. We put the marijuana tax on warrant.
Second.
The warrant.
All right, discussion.
It, we're never going to get one probably, but I think it's a good idea to have it in place just in case we do to get, you know, there's towns that are making a lot of money off of this.
Okay, my thought is that if we, okay, it's a which way do we go? If you have a marijuana tax, does that mean that your um, say, come?
No, we've, we've already said that.
And if, if you were a vendor and you saw this, you saw the marijuana tax on the town books. Would you or would you not think that this, that you would want something in that community?
If we didn't have it, they have been here already asking for it because we don't have it in place.
Right. And didn't we make a motion at one of our meetings that we were not to entertain any business asking until they had gone to all the appropriate boards and had all the permits before they came in front of us?
Yep.
Am I in that?
Yep. So this, this just allows us to take, take 3%, no matter what our, our contract was with them. So um, I think it's, it's an easy decision. My opinion that you want to come and have a marijuana, we're getting 3% of your money first. And then we also have, are going to negotiate the, the, the contract. Many towns have added stuff on the, um, I think air was having their rotary redone because they, they negotiated. There's a couple of them out there that I know did that. So.
My point is
The state allows us to take 3%. This is, this is our chance to take it.
Right. But I guess my point is we've got a bylaw and we've got marijuana can come to town. We voted on that. So if they find the proper place to put it. There's nothing we can do. We can't stop it. But I think if I'm not mistaken, it's very limited as to where it ever could be put, correct? So this really is a mute argument. We put the 3%. If it shows up here, there's nothing we can do. Next pay is voted for.
Yep. And we get 3% of their money.
Right. And whatever, let's negotiate.
Which pays for your pavement management plan. I'm serious. That's what these towns are doing it for.
Favor by means of marijuana. So
It's a, it's a, it's a new, a new use of the word pothole.
Yeah. I mean, the city of Denver is reclaiming their entire city with the, the money they're making off of it.
Well, let's just
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes.
All right. Um, dum de 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 dum dum. We get to, so in the, there is a version in your shared drive where I've filled in these planning board articles.
Okay, that's good. That was one of the questions.
Yep. So this, yeah, Beth has forwarded them all now, voted by the planning board, actually probably, let me just
I saw that 43D was there, um, but that was, it was separate. It wasn't in the warrant. I, I printed what I printed this afternoon.
Yeah, and I, I had
Guys can print because I, I am truly struggling.
Here's the other thing, Jim. Under the marijuana, make sure the description isn't really
Yes, I see that. Um, I'm not going to find it right now. All right. So we'll go back to the one we're just looking at. All right. So
The 43D was there. I didn't see the other two, but they, they're probably there now.
The one, the one thing that needs to be corrected about it though, Veronica, is um I, as place holders, had them all as zoning, but they're not all zoning.
Correct.
So scenic is a general bylaw.
I think
43D is zoning. Age restricted. I need to look deeper and see what their intention is because it could be one or the other.
Okay.
So those will, those will live in either zoning or general bylaws. Um, we have the charter review report that came in. And under real property, all we have is the both road, road parcel. I've not gotten anything back. So the last communication with the gentleman was that he was going to say if they were willing to, to flip it for even the assessed value, instead of they were looking for something markedly higher than that, thinking that it was a buildable parcel. Um, and it's gone cold. I can place one more
There's nothing there, you know, there's no
And we have two citizen petition articles. One is the Main Street Town Hall. So this is the um the citizen petition article that came in to see if the town would be willing to grant a permanent right of way across the parking lot behind Town Hall to access the uh, the former Pete's Barbershop Building on Main Street.
Do you have the wording for that?
Yeah, they, it was a citizen petition. So it came in. We have to go exactly as the petition was written. The same with forensic audit is a citizen petition. So it's word for word, exactly as was submitted in the citizen position, not petition. This is to see if the town will vote to support the um, the conduct of a forensic audit from January 1st of 2016 to date. So that'll be a citizen petition article and that's the end of the
Okay, so you're going to fill this all in and
I've got another version right now where I've got the, the dog license one in, all the zone, all the planning board ones in. And I thought I'd saved it to the share file, but I don't see it in there.
Um, Chaz, I see you have your hand up. Do you have a, a question about the planning board?
There's a housing authority article that's supposed to be in there as well.
Yep, it is. It is.
Really on, I think. It was the housing production plan, correct?
Yep.
That the redirection of funds or
The reallocation of funds, correct?
Yep. That one's right in here, Chaz, under general financial articles.
Okay.
Do you have wording for that?
Yeah, they submitted wording for it. Yep.
Okay. So when will
I started to do it today. I'll probably get it done, maybe close the business tomorrow. If, if not then, then, then definitely um, by Thursday. So I can get, I can get around. So we'll have it on the packet for next Monday's, uh, next Tuesday's meeting. But definitely in advance that you'll have it in the shared drive.
And will Adam get it at the same time that we get it?
Yeah. Yeah. And he's already, the, the three that would likely, the four that would likely take up the most of his time or consideration, he's already reviewed. The
The ones for the planning board.
He's already done his review and they've made edits or taken into consideration his points. And I know that the housing authority was working with him, you know, on a, on a ongoing basis regarding their issues and concerns. So
I want him to have enough time to go through and
Hey Jim? I know we're going to get on to this SharePoint thing here and we're going to discuss that, but I, I need to see if there's any way, whatever you've got to do. The SharePoint, I cannot get these documents out. I can't get to print them. I just, I have no faith in that SharePoint right now. We'll discuss it later. But is there any way that you can get whatever selectmen's packet that's going to be used next Tuesday, done for Friday morning before I leave, I can come pick up and I have it. And if I can find a way somehow to be available for that meeting, I will try, but I cannot promise that.
Yeah, we can, we can get that together.
Um, Jim?
Yeah.
Is it possible, you know how we did the simultaneous disclosure packet?
Yep.
The link up?
Yep.
Were you able to um, access that, Joe? When it went up as a link as part of the um, posting?
He wants a hard copy, Veronica. That's his, his issue is that he can't print from the SharePoint or from the link like that. So he wants a hard copy. So
I, I, Ron, I can, I can see all these documents. I, I, they're there, but I cannot, and I actually worked with IT for an entire day. And we'll get into that discussion. It just, it, it's, it's a bad deal.
All right.
So where are we?
Uh, we are at um, town meeting logistics. So it looks like we've done annual. Do we need a vote, Jim? Did we do that already?
We don't need to yet because they're, they're, they're all submitted. Those are the ones that are in by the deadline. So that's what's get finalized and you'll have it at your next meeting for your, your vote.
And so we'll vote. Okay. Let me see. I have a list here uh, for next meeting. So ATM, STM, vote. All right. All right. Meeting logistics. So I had, I had put library senior, where are we having town meeting?
Right.
How is it going to work? And I guess, um, did I send this to you this afternoon, Jim? Can we do it?
This morning you sent me something saying that you were thinking the, the Great Hall and selectmen chambers and meeting room two perhaps, and if necessary
The parking lot.
The parking lot for extreme overflow.
Yes.
Actually had the opportunity to talk to Joe as well. Uh, Joe thought that that was a good idea to try to get that taken care of. The, the um the setback person to person has gone from six to three feet. So it's basically every other chair.
Right.
Get away within the, in the hall. So I'm going to work with Bo and Eric Sharktran to see how many we can fit in each space. You know
I was, I was trying to find counts for allowed into buildings and I came up with 100 in an indoor spot or I don't know what applies. I mean, schools are open.
Right, right.
So um, so I, I found the, the
It's a gathering of 100 people inside this. That's the limit for the state.
Right. And 150 outside is what I found.
I think it's 200 for outside, but maybe 150.
That's just what I saw when I looked at it this afternoon. So um, and quorum is 75.
We don't get over 100.
So um
100 people in one room. So if we're using two levels of, or just 100, no matter where.
I, I thought it was 100 in, for an indoor gathering. So I guess it depends on how you um, do it and 150 for in a public space, in a public space is what it said, I believe were the words. If I could find the place where I wrote that down, it was, who are you? 100 indoors, 150 outdoors.
With Joe's point, does the selectmen's chamber count as we can have 100 in there and the Great Hall?
Yeah, I don't know. Then it was 50% of max, maximum occupancy and then there was a 10 per a thousand square feet rule. Um, so I'm not sure what rule applies
Yeah.
To Town Hall.
That's what I was saying, having heard from at least two of you offline, not able to talk about it until now. I get with Bo and Eric tomorrow and have that, you know, we've got the, the, the meeting halls are posted with occupancy limits already. So we know what the everyday non-COVID limits are and we can back into it from there and determine how many we can get in each space.
It's 50% of maximum occupancy. So I wrote down all these numbers and I'm like, which one applies here? I have no idea. So um
Get it back. We need to get back in Town Hall. We just, we need to have our meetings in Town Hall. Get our, our town meeting in Town Hall. I, I would ask someone in the state, Jim, look, we're going to use the Great Hall, which is one big room. We're going to do a room downstairs. If those people are not in the same gathering, I would consider that. And if somebody's in another room, that's not in, I, 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 I think we'd need clarification on that.
Absolutely.
So we're going to, we're going to go forward to make a motion that this is what we're doing. We're going into the great room if it's possible. And that's where town meeting is going to be on our regular meeting times.
Um, I'm good with that. I do think we should uh, I, I think we should say, I put, you know, on the agenda, I put six to eight because I was thinking outside. But um, I, I think we should put a time limit to the end. I'm just thinking time in space with people during a pandemic might not be a good idea to have a five hour meeting, you know?
From six to 10.
That's why Joe wants to get selectmen's meetings back in person. So we don't have five hour That's why Joe wants to get Selectmen's Meetings back in person, so we don't have five-hour meetings.
Come on, Jim, don't throw me under the bus now.
So anyway, um, so uh, yeah, so let's, let's do Tuesday, May fourth. Figure out Great Hall and how we can do it and how people we can do there. If we need to have more people, then get that sound system and do it and set it up outside. And we can.
And fix the ten. And we'll set a time, six to ten. If we're not done.
Six to nine.
Can I have a, I have a question?
Yeah.
Um, how are we supposed to film after dark?
Well, see, that might be a problem too, if you're filming outside, but we're thinking in.
Right, I'm just saying if it's not in Town Hall.
If it's not in Town Hall, then.
Well, what, what about a Saturday meeting?
Um. Well, we could do, we could open on the fourth and continue to um, the Saturday if we wanted, I suppose. I just think we should do the fourth, and if we can see how many people are inside, we're having the meeting on the fourth. The rollover dates will be the sixth and the eighth. And we'll go from there. Kathy, go ahead.
Um, so if you have any people outside in a parking lot and people inside, that's gonna make it very difficult for people to check in.
Um. Well, they would all check in outside, which might be the best thing to do anyway. Um.
They would. They would check in outside, not entering into the building?
That might be the best way to do it. I don't know. Think about it.
Okay, yeah, um, I know Pepperell had a issue with it um, when they did the drive-in style, so.
Maybe Kathy, maybe we have them check in at the lower level. And once we've reached capacity, sending people upstairs, we send them right back around the horseshoe by the accountant's office and back outside.
Yeah, that, okay. That might work, yeah.
Yeah, okay, we'll have to talk about it. Okay, thank you.
Uh, so I, I would say we post Town Meeting for Tuesday, May fourth at what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock? Do you think that's too early?
I don't know.
The six o'clock, that's when we have our meetings, but I, I don't know.
Instead of, instead of timeline to eight o'clock?
And set, yeah, do six to eight, if it becomes.
Cause it'll, it'll still be light, it'll still be light by then, at that time.
Right, right. So let's do six to eight on Monday. I mean, Tuesday the fourth, continue to six to eight on Tuesday the sixth. And then hopefully we'll be done by then. But if not, there's Saturday.
And that, that, and we'd have to get John Baird on board with that as well, cause if we're not done in two hours, he's gonna have to continue the meeting.
I asked him to save these times. And continuing, yeah. And if we have people outside in an extra room, we need extra moderators to sworn in. I, because don't we need a moderator in each room or some such?
I think you need, you need a microphone in each room, or an ability to ask questions.
Right, so, and I know before when we've had overflow rooms, we've had a mo, we've had Gene in there usually.
Gene, we've had several people, so I don't think it's a big deal.
So I, I did put that in an email. And John's gotten it today. And maybe yesterday.
And I guess the only other thing I would, just not knowing what's gonna happen in a month. Um. And numbers go back up. Jim, I would ask that you secure the tent for the parking lot? Or, or have, have a backup plan, I guess is my.
Will there be a, a sound system if we have to go two and three nights? That would be setting it up.
It, it's just like we did last, whenever we did it over at the Library Senior Center.
Right, but I thought we rented the sound system.
We did.
The company. So you're just have them come three times? Won't that be more costly?
Probably, but you know, that's the way it goes.
That's what we gotta do.
I was just thinking do it on Saturday and then it's just one, one.
And I guess that was my point, is doing it on the Saturdays, you know, you can have, you know, start it at ten o'clock, you can go to one. And get as much done as you can instead of having to do it twice. Oh, something to think about. We don't have to decide right now, but.
I think we should decide. Um, I prefer not to do a weekend if we don't have to.
Me neither. I think they would, May fourth, Jim, deal with the state, see exactly, call, get what we gotta do. And if we have to throw a monkey wrench at it next week, we have to reconsider, but let's set a date, May fourth, six to eight, May sixth, six to eight. I, I don't see we're gonna fill the capacity of the, the great room and the other rooms. Just be prepared. Just Jim can work with the building inspector and the maintenance guy and get it set up.
Would you consider six to nine? Just I think, I think it's more likely we'll get it done in three hours than if people think it's just gonna be two.
I don't mind. It, it has more to do with what Lisa said about filming outside. Uh, you know, if they can't film outside, I mean, maybe we can get big lights. I don't know.
Fire Department has lighting. We can deal with the fire chief on here, I think.
The only concern with the lighting is that um, when you're filming, it's gonna be reflective and it's gonna be tough to.
Okay, here's another question.
We didn't film. We, 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 we didn't film in the outside rooms at the last time we had overflow. We provided audio for them.
Okay.
But there was.
It'll be audio on TV, right? You're not filming outside.
Right, we just have speakers. That'd be our requirement, microphone and speakers.
And so the, and then any filming is just in the Great Hall?
Correct.
All right, then if, and, and if it comes, it's the sound coming from another room.
Right.
And in that case, we could do six to ten on, you know, the fourth. And do it. Um, if it, if it's not in, well, if we have people outside though, hmm. Um, that might not be so much fun.
Oh, that'll be, I mean, it's like every town meeting, there's gonna be people that come and go during the, the meeting, so if, if a space opens inside, then you can bring them in.
That's true.
So do we, Chief, are you on? Fire Chief, Mark?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You looking for the fire chief?
Yeah. Hey, do you, do we have, if we have to set up outside of Town Hall? Do you, you have the big lighting, correct?
Uh, we have one, yeah, it's pretty old though. It's our, it's a military surplus.
Okay.
We do have one, I, cause they, they generally set it up for the. When we do have Town Meeting. Yeah.
Tima has one.
Yeah.
But we have something available in town if we needed it, correct?
We have two. Tima has one and we have one.
Awesome, that's all we need. So we'll be fine.
And you can always, you can always rent one.
Make a motion, we set Town Meeting for May fourth from six to ten. And overflow, if we need it, six, from six till finish.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. I saw Kathy with her hand up.
Um, if people are in their cars, they, I don't know how you do it, but I know Pepperell had it on a radio station. So we would have to set something up like that. And then have to have somebody count the votes from the people who are voting in their cars.
I wasn't thinking cars. I was thinking chairs in the parking lot. I was thinking.
Okay.
And the parking lot, if we were using it for overflow, people couldn't park there. They'd have to park at Jeff Street or at the common.
I, I haven't heard good things about the, the in-car view.
No, not good, not good.
So it would just be a sound system outside. Um, so, all right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any other, any further discussion?
Was it six to ten or the original six to eight?
Six to ten, is what I said.
You did.
So May, May fourth from six to ten, P, six, PM to ten PM. If we need to go the second night, May sixth, from six PM till finish.
Sounds good. Uh, okay, so. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Millie, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. Jim, you'll let um, John know and Adam know?
Yep.
Thank you.
And you will find out all the important numbers for us, Jim, so we get ourselves jammed up.
Yeah, I'll be working with Eric and Bo tomorrow. Make sure that we're.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so um, four point, moving on, four point five, reopening Town Hall. Um, discussion regarding bringing the public back, so um, I, I guess Memorial Hall usage. I, I think I sent to you, Jim, my, I send you crazy ideas when I think of them. They, they just sort of come randomly, and I think this was, did I send this to you? I think I did.
I didn't see a crazy Memorial Hall one.
Uh, one where we would open and people would set dates and um, didn't I send, you know, like, we would always, we, the Board of Selectmen, would always have Tuesday in the Great Hall.
Yeah, we talked about setting, it's, it's on the agenda, setting a fixed dates for.
Yes, yes, yes. So you and I talked, okay, so it was you that I, I sent that to or talked to it about. All right, so um, and then establish set, uh, scheduled times, cause we've been running into a lot of um, conflicting times for meetings on days, so if, you know, like, um, we're pretty bad. We're like six to forever, but if you're, you know, like housing and uh, you know, whoever else is on Thursday nights, you know, to kinda say, okay, you're gonna get, you know, five to seven and you're gonna get seven to nine, if people can actually do that, cause I am apparently not so good at doing that, but anyway, um, you, you know, just so we have set times and we use Memorial Hall so that people are spaced out.
Are you gonna set ti, you're gonna set times now that I'm leaving? At ten o'clock?
Not for Board of Selectmen, forget it. Board of Selectmen, that's off the radar.
Hey, now meetings are gonna be from six to six thirty.
I love it, Joe. Thank, where were you about two months ago?
With a ten-minute coffee break.
Yes.
Bring my coffee.
So my opinion on reopening, I think we need to make sure first and foremost, Jim, gets confirmation from the state. We should go back into Town Hall, start in, you know, the end of, you know, April, beginning of May, well, start.
Town Meeting.
After Town Meeting, start going back our regular first and third Tuesday. And then the other boards can put their time in and set the Great Hall up and just do that.
What is? What is the date where anybody can, who wants a vaccination can get a vaccine?
April nineteenth, everybody eighteen and older.
Okay, so um, maybe we should give a month, you know, and say, well, we'll start mid-May, because then maybe we'll have everybody.
I would do at least that, because that would, cause it's four, it's four weeks between vaccines for the Moderna, which is the worst case, so. We're fully vaccinated.
If we switch to our regular schedule, we should have a meeting May fourth and the eighteenth. So let's just plan on May eighteenth to start our first.
And the, the other op, the other option you guys have is, much like restaurants, Disneyland, whoever, is if you plan on attending in person, you make, have to make a reservation, otherwise a Zoom meeting. Um.
We could do that, right?
Because, because, I mean, you can't, no one's gonna be sitting at the front door counting how many people come in. That's realistic, so, uh, and, and this has been my point from, you know, since last year, is like, having a public meeting, you have no idea who's gonna come in or how many people are gonna come in, so if we have an idea of the, the capacity of the Selectmen's Chamber, if we have in the Great Hall, is twenty-five and you have twenty-five people registered, you cut it off, and then it's thank you, but you have to attend, attend remotely.
Yep, good idea.
Just a suggestion, I, I, I'm.
We talked about that.
I, I'm just speaking to, since I work in public health and.
So the Great Hall, how many people do you think we're gonna be able to allow into the main Great Hall?
Well.
I think that's what Jim's doing tomorrow.
All right. So I would think Board of Selectmen and a regular Selectmen's Meeting would make capacity to the Great Hall.
I have no idea. Um.
Doubtful, it's just it's, it's not set up for the cameras and all that fun stuff, so there's logistics there that we have, would have to consider.
Okay. So do we need them to do this?
I, I think Jim, do his homework first before you can. Or make, I mean, cause really, what you're doing is changing the uh, our COVID policy for the building use.
Yeah.
So, which, which we really haven't done since last year, so.
Um, I, I don't know that, well, I, if we do a motion, it should be um, uh, have a, we move to reopen um, Town Hall for meetings and I guess for.
Oh, I, I think the motion would be to, to plan on it. Establish a plan to update the COVID. Um, so directed, directed towns administrator, town administrator to update the COVID opening plan, or something to that effect, Joe, Jim?
Yeah, in consultation.
Do you know what I'm talking?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not speaking to you anymore at ten o'clock, so.
Yep, consultation with the Chair to, to pull that document up and make it say what it is that you've been talking about for the last couple of minutes here.
Much, much like the library or the senior center are doing.
Yeah.
Correct. All right, so do we have a motion?
We have a motion to have Jim work on the reopening plans for Town Hall COVID update.
In a second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Millie, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, we already did four point six, so that takes us to four point seven. Uh, a request to declare the highway grindings and street milling as surplus. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we uh, declare the highway grinds, street millings as surplus material with no value.
Second.
Um, I, I just have to ask a question about this. Where does it go?
I have a very, I'm very good authority, one person that is gobbled it up last time we did Bayberry Hill Road.
Yeah, the um, we, we would have to pay to get rid of it, so the way it's been done historically in town is there is a, a running list of people that have interest in it. And whenever we have some, whoever's next up on the list gets the call, and if they can use some, they get it. If they can use it all, they get it. And we're just happy to be rid of it.
All right.
It will, it will be gone instantly, I can tell you that.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Millie, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. Okay. Uh, so um, Jim?
Yes.
Point one, Town Administrator Updates and Reports, Fuel Assistance Grant Update.
Yep, um, what I can offer you, Madam Chair and members of the board, is that um, COG has several applications pending. One that's, I think, finalized, two that are being confirmed with New England Farm Workers Council. Um, and we've received several calls in-house here that we've been facilitating. Um, trying to get them to get their paper, help them get their paperwork from New England Farm Workers, because they've been denied there and are seeking assistance through this supplemental process. So that would be my best count, five that are at play currently. I do not know, and I've tried to find out if um, Ms. Gilhuli has sent out our information. The two people that have reached out to us as cold calls did so based on talk on the street. So that tells me that likely did not get the information from New England Farm Workers. So I don't know if anyone else that's on the call has heard anything differently from Ms. Gilhuli, but um, neither Wayne, Dar, or I have, and both of us have reached out to her.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you very much. Um. Board of Selectmen announcements. Joe, this looks like you. Discussion regarding SharePoint. Board of Selectmen announcements. Joe, this looks like you. Discussion regarding SharePoint.
Well, so we have to think of something different. You know, I I I don't think the SharePoint's the place that we really should be. Uh, I think.
Joe, I have a simple solution for you.
Yeah.
Jim, are you familiar with Dropbox?
Oh, yeah.
Dropbox is extremely easy to use. You can set it up securely that if it's selectmen-only stuff, it's, you know, Joe, Veronica, whoever's taking my place, have access to it. Um, it works on every platform, Google. Um, it's free. It's very easy to use. You should have no problem with it, Joe. SharePoint's good, but it does have its limitations, I agree. As you saw, you stumped me last week when I tried to help you. It's the first time I've sure I've had issues with SharePoint, so I would suggest setting up a Dropbox account where you can dump all the documents.
Well, that's just why I'm just asking, you know, let's.
No, I I and and I know, that's that's why I'm offering this this option. Um, Jim, I don't know if I can help you with that. It's not that hard to do. Been using.
I have a Dropbox that that I use in-house. Um, I know Beth had set set a Dropbox up, so Veronica, I don't know if you ever used Dropbox while you were on the planning board? Um, but I know that Beth had.
Planning board, I don't think, but I've used Dropbox.
I think I've had one going there.
There's about a dozen of them I can find right now that it it's easy. The Microsoft one is, it's Microsoft, but it they have bugs.
I am confused as to why you can't print from SharePoint. It seems to me.
He he can, he can't set up more than one printer.
Oh, that's a device issue. It's not an issue.
It's not a SharePoint issue. It's it, he's trying to print from his phone, which.
Or my tablet, and it won't do.
Right, and so it's an apple, an Apple app talking to a Microsoft app, which is a notorious bad idea.
Um, although I, well, I have, I haven't, I work on a Mac and I haven't had any problem.
Yeah, my my daughter works on a Chromebook and she can't connect to my printer anymore either. I don't know why, it just stopped. So there are glitches out, that's that's, and Joe's found one.
Oh, and I've got it. And I just want to make it easy for us, and I don't want a great headache for you guys, but.
I mean, you can still use SharePoint to view the documents. That's not an issue, but if you put it in Dropbox, then Joe can throw it in any piece of equipment he has.
Then.
It's a duplicate effort run Jim's part, I know, but.
I I guess my question is, if he can't print from SharePoint, because it's a printer problem with the one device, he he can't switch the device, is he gonna have the same problem?
No, I I've I've done it before.
No, because I I print off of my devices on both of those printers, but share SharePoint, I cannot do it.
Yeah, it it, I don't know, but it it's something with SharePoint, there's a glitch there.
I would.
I I I would try it with Dropbox first, I guess, is my my opinion. So Jim, if you can do like a practice run with Joe tomorrow.
I can set some stuff up with Joe on Dropbox and make sure he can print it from both printers before we make any any move to to do anything drastic.
It sounds like a printer selection issue to me, as opposed to.
It, the the problem is with with Apple, you can't choose more than one printer. On your phone. On your phone.
Yeah.
And tablet.
Yeah, the IT, our IT people worked with me for a whole day.
Guardian tried, um, and before people think that that Wayne and Joe were communicating uh, in violation of meeting law, when Wayne just said that he helped Joe. He came to sign the warrant. Joe and I were working on his phone. And I said, Wayne, can you see if you can fix Joe's phone, because we can't figure it out? So before anybody runs to the to the ATM office or anybody.
No documents were shared. It was me trying to establish a technical.
And we all failed it, what we were trying, so it's.
And we didn't get it done anyway, so.
I know, and I apologize, Joe, sorry.
It's all right. We tried. That's all. I appreciate the effort.
I I don't like the fail. That's my problem.
All right. Well, that's good, and let's move on with that. I'm good.
Okay, um, reports from board liaisons. Well, this one's mine. Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant. We did get the, we did get the grant. Um, Emmy received the um, the award letter today. Have you seen it, Jim? Did you get it?
Yep.
Um, so I just want to read the first paragraph. Dear Emmy Hoff, thank you for submitting a project application to the Mass dot Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Program. Your project application has been reviewed, and we are pleased to notify you that your reimagined streets project has been approved for funding. We received many applications and had a competitive applicant pool from which to select, and your application stood out. Town's reimagined streets project will be funded at $182,981.25 under Chapter 90, contract number blah, blah, blah. Ongoing maintenance, operational enforcement costs associated with the project are not eligible uses of this funding. And there's a couple more paragraphs for that. With you and the full Townsend team as this project advances, so.
Congratulations to all of all of you, Veronica, Emmy, Owen, Emily, I mean, you guys.
There were a lot of people that worked, Bonnie Fitzpatrick, a lot of people worked on this. You did, Jim, Beth did, early on.
Really, really good job, guys.
May, can I, may I say something, Chair, Madam Chair?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to say it was an amazing group of people, and I I was just so impressed with everyone, and I felt really stupid some days, because they were so amazing and so smart. But Ronnie, we owe it all to you, period. Thank you. I really do. You were, you know, your leadership and just even finding this thing out and the leadership was, we owe it to you. Thank you very much.
We owe it to the Bar Foundation and Margaret Kent at Kettleman Associates.
They were great, too. A- Adria and Margaret, yes.
Yeah, Adria and Margaret helped an awful lot. So anyway, all right, so that's that. 5.4, um, the FXM Associates bill, Jim?
Yep. Um, this is a a matter that's been kicking around for some time, and um, I was asked to place it on the agenda. So this contract that was Select Board and FXM Associates to do some work on the master plan. And the discussion on the common last year, at some point, I gather, was that the bill should be paid. Um, it's not been paid as of yet, so I think a request came in specifically to the Select Board, because you were the contract signatories to authorize the payment, so it can be processed to be paid. Did I get that right?
And did we, yes. And do we have enough funds in the account, was the other. I didn't know what the bill was.
We.
We do. Okay. All right. So I I guess we need a motion to pay the, make the final payment to FXM Associates.
Make a motion to pay the final bill to FX Associates.
Is there? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Emily, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So we will pay that. All right, I need to go back up to 4.2.1 under ATM warrant review, because I forgot this. This is the Charter Review Committee Report Discussion. Um, we didn't talk about that. I I think that, uh, this was me that put that up there. I had suggested that, um, the Charter Committee redo their public hearing only because, just to make people aware of it, but I think since then, I think John has put a PDF on the website, or someone has. So I think I would just direct people to look at that if they're interested in seeing what changes were made to the charter.
Speaking with him on Friday, I know there was a discussion to have another meeting with his his board and to schedule that public meeting.
Okay, that's entirely up to them, but the article, the warrant article is already on, correct? Yes.
Yep.
So, all right, so we're good. But they did post, someone posted something to the website about the charter. Is it on there, Jim? I see you.
I'm just scanning right now to see.
I thought it was under news.
Yep.
Um, might be, you know, because things get pushed down. Um, speaking of which, I would like to post the the letter and the, um, shared streets and spaces on the website, so that people know that we have that, and to put the application up so people can see, uh, what's gonna happen, so.
Proposed charter change is on the homepage. Um, it's it's now the fourth of the four allowed right-hand blocks, so.
Well, we'll do, I'm meeting with Carolyn tomorrow, so we might do some adjusting. Anyway, okay, thank you. So that's that. All right, um, next meetings. So we'll have a meeting on, um, the 13th. Uh, I wasn't planning to meet on the 20th unless we need to. Um, if we have everything done for the warrant and can vote it, do we need a 20th meeting?
I'm out.
What?
What do you mean? You got five more days.
And then I wanted to do a meeting on the 20th for the new member, so.
If we have it done for next Tuesday night and can vote it in its final form, then there's no need for one the following week.
All right, so let's just.
So what I have on the agenda for next week's meeting um, is the appointment that we didn't make today, if if that's available. The consideration of temporary access repeats barber shop. Jim, the goals, if that needs any further discussion?
Yeah, I've actually got it in, I think, rough enough shape to get back out at the next meeting for you guys to take and make sure I've got it packaged in the right little boxes.
All right, um, the budget and the ATM STM warrant votes.
Yep.
And that's what I've got right now.
Are we limited to that?
Uh, we know. I I thought we were limited today.
I know, and and this was, I'm not gonna say horrible, but, um, we gotta, we have to have some discipline on on what we.
Well, we could have had Saturday for the budget, but people don't come on Saturday, so, you know, it's all put on this.
You know, but there's there's several things that.
Well, it might be different from you, Wayne, but it's what it is. All right, executive sessions. So, um, uh, we are at this point, um, so meetings, 4/13. And if we need it, 4/20. If we don't need it, 4/27. Because 4/27 will be the meeting before the town meeting the following week.
To vote the articles and support, not support, yep.
That's all good.
All right. All right, then, uh, that is it for the regular agenda. Now we have executive session.
So we gotta read all three of these?
Yes, please.
Do we move to them one at a time, or do we?
No, you could, you could move them all at the same time and just take, you know, you're gonna take the first one first and, you know.
All right.
Once once they're moved, you're 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 good to keep going.
The move, we go into executive session. Vote to be taken. Executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A4 to discuss the commitment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. Two, executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A3 to discuss the strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so they, so declares reference all unions. Three, executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel town administrator.
And we will not be coming back to open session.
We'll be not coming back from executive session into general.
Second.
And does the chair so declare for section three? The the middle one, Veronica.
What do I have to declare?
Having an open, having an open meeting on union contracts would be detrimental, so you have to so declare before we can go in.
Oh, and the chair so declares. I so declare.
And I so second.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Emily, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Fight.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Can we take a minute?